Good afternoon, everyone. And I want to call the March 28 Council Meeting to order. This is the time that we have our action review and building, business review of items. We carry this through on our agenda. And after we have this time for an hour and a half, and then we'll go into our business meeting in the chamber after we follow the action review and business section of the meeting. So, welcome to everyone, and thank you for all being here. This meeting is being held in accordance with our requirements for access to the process. And I guess all of us know by now every type of computer access that's available, from WebEx to Zoom, and who knows how this others now. So glad to do this. We'll have introductions when we go to the dais in the chamber before our public hearing and those speakers. So let's just go ahead and dive in to our meeting. Today, we want to ask Ms. Harris to come up and talk about if their council, mayor and council consent questions, or any questions that have been presented as a part of the agenda today. So I'm going to turn it over to the manager, and I guess Ms. Harris.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and council. And you have before you, and also in your email, the current questions and answers. And I believe Mr. Winston had stepped out, but one of his is also on a business item, so you'll have time to discuss that further as needed. But was there any other questions on any of the consent items? There's not any online, is there?
I don't see anyone saying that they have a question. So with that, let me go ahead and ask, before we go to our presentations, is there anyone that would like to have a consent item for comment before we go into that section of voting on the consent items?
No, none in the room.
Okay, so do we have anyone that would like to have a separate vote on any item?
No, none in the room, mayor.
All right, so we'll now go, I think if that's workable for everyone, we can take care of our consent items, since there's no changes by the staff or requests by the council. So I'd like to go to the item where we would have a roll call vote on adoption of consent items 30 through, let's see, what's our last one?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, thank you, Mr. Eggleston. So we have, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved in, seconded.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so we'll go ahead and start with our roll call vote. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Edmira?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Mr. Phipps hasn't arrived yet.
Okay, all right, Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Mr. Bakari has not arrived yet.
Okay, well, that's still a majority of over six, so the consent agenda is approved. Now I'll turn it over to the city. I'm sorry, Mr. Newton, sorry, Mr. Newton.
Watlington's a yes as well.
And Ms. Watlington, thank you. I got a clip here off of my paper, so thank you very much. So that motion passes. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager for the agenda overview of our presentations for this evening. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, mayor and members of council. We have three items for you tonight on the action review. Sean Heath will give us a home program update. You may recall that there is about nine and a half million dollars that is yet to be programmed. We didn't have a chance to discuss it with you at the last meeting, but Sean will lead off today. And then we have Sarah Hazel, which will give, she will give you an update with the Strategic Energy Action Plan, or CAAP. And then lastly, we will have Allison Craig available in 267 today to talk about the policy map update. But when we actually get into the chamber under the manager's report, Allison will be able to provide the similar updates so that the public, while you are in the business meeting, can hear that too. And mayor, we have no closed session items, so with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, and then eventually to Sean.
All right, well, let's go with, without any undue time, let's go to Sean Heath for the home program update.
Thank you, Mayor Lawl, good evening, everyone. Thank you. As Manager Jones mentioned, tonight's stimulus fund presentation relates to a specific allocation received last year by the City of Charlotte, the HUD Home Program. So this is separate and distinct from the conversations that we've had regarding the $71 million in local fiscal recovery funds. Tonight, we'll walk through the status of the program and the RFP that was released last year, and recommendations will be shared this evening for feedback in hopes of having something for your vote on April 11th. Just as a quick reminder, on the Home ARPA Program, and this slide is based on a discussion from December 6th that will look familiar. City of Charlotte received $11.6 million under the Home ARPA Program. On December 6th, council approved the use of $2 million of that funding in support of the Charlotte Rescue Missions, expanding programming related to their rebound program for men. And council also endorsed the idea of staff moving forward with an RFP in order to allow the marketplace to respond with their best ideas associated with the remaining $9.6 million under this allocation. So soon after the December 6 meeting, we put the wheels in motion on the RFP. Very quickly, on the process, the RFP went out right before Christmas. We had a pre-submitting conference in early January, there were roughly 75 members of the community that participated in that with an interest in pursuing the RFP. Proposals were due in late January. In February, we went through an evaluation process, and late March, here we are with recommendations leading up to the April 11 business meeting. For the RFP itself, as you would expect, we had evaluation criteria and a scoring tool that was utilized. The evaluation criteria included agency experience, cost effectiveness. The evaluation team included folks from Housing and Neighborhood Services, as well as economic development. I would point out that Mecklenburg County was directly involved in this effort. So if you think about all of the allocations under the American Rescue Plan, generally speaking, where possible, the federal government wanted to leverage existing programs as a vehicle to put the money to work. So the home program is something that we're quite accustomed to here in this area, and Charlotte serves as the lead agency for the Charlotte-Mecklenburg Home Consortium, which includes Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, and the six towns. So we look at this with a regional lens, I want to mention that now, because one of the recommendations tonight is for an organization doing homelessness assistance work in the northern part of the county. Before we get into the recommendations themselves, I thought it'd be helpful to just quickly highlight, how does this work fit into the homelessness and housing continuum? Because this particular allocation has fairly narrowly defined uses, but I didn't want to lose sight of the bigger picture here. So going from left to right on the slide, these are different types of interventions or programs, all of which would be designed to either prevent and/or address homelessness in Charlotte. And the City of Charlotte is engaged in all of these efforts in various ways. So homelessness prevention, if you think about the work that we've done in the last couple of years related to emergency rental assistance, in emergency shelter space, think about the things that we've done with Roof Above and Salvation Army. I'll skip the items in blue font, because that's the focus for tonight's presentation. Moving far to the right, self-sufficiency, everything the City of Charlotte has done associated with things like permanent supportive housing, projects we've supported with Dream Key, and Roof Above, for example. And then also everything that the city's doing in that 30% AMI and below space. So the blue font, which is the real sweet spot for this particular RFP, is rental assistance and supportive services. And the way I would think about this is, these opportunities are really a bridge between homelessness and self-sufficiency. So what are all the things that can be done to help individuals that have been homeless to be prepared, to be successful in either permanent supportive housing or true self-sufficiency? So with the housing-first mentality, the tenant-based rental assistance comes into play. And then the whole range of supportive services, including case management, housing navigation, everything related to mental health and substance use. All of these things are intended to serve as a bridge in order to help these individuals and these households be ready for permanent housing. This is a summary of the recommendations, and this would fully deploy the available balance of about $9.6 million. The way these are sorted, the first four recommendations are each combination proposals that include both rental assistance and supportive services. Then there are two, Social Serve and the Relatives in particular, that are focused exclusively on supportive services. And one RFP, one proposal relates just to rental assistance, and that was from the Salvation Army. So I'll quickly go through each of these, and then open it up for any feedback or questions First, on the United Way, this was the largest proposal that we're recommending. This is really an extension of a lot of the work that was started last year, under the CARES Act, with the CARES ESG funding that was received by the City of Charlotte. There was a $2 million recommendation that was approved by council last year, and that really related to individuals in the community that were being housed in hotels, a number of individuals that were referred to that programming from the North End encampment. So this builds on something that we've been working on with the United Way over the past year or so. The way that this would be structured is roughly, roughly two-thirds of the funding would go towards tenant-based rental assistance, and the other third would go towards supportive services. This would help roughly 150 clients over a two-year basis. And consistent with the way the program was structured last year with the United Way, this would be set up as a collaborative-type project. The United Way would essentially serve as the quarterback organization. They would bring other agency partners into the fold that can help out with things like case management services and other supportive services. Roof Above here, once again, this is another combination proposal with rental assistance and supportive services. Here, roughly 75% of the funding would go towards tenant-based rental assistance, with the balance on supportive services. The focus for Roof Above's programming would be on senior citizens and individuals with disabilities. They would primarily serve men in their shelters, but would also accept some referrals from other agencies. All participants would be served by a case manager. One of the benefits here, of course, is it would free up shelter capacity, all while serving as a bridge towards permanent supportive housing for these individuals. Moving on to Hope House Foundation, this is the entity that I alluded to earlier that provides homeless-related services in North Mecklenburg County. With the HUD Home being a regional program, as I mentioned, we had someone from the county serving on the review committee. This particular proposal is primarily in the supportive services space. It would support women and children in the North Mecklenburg County region that are seeking to move and transition into permanent supportive housing. Once again, a lot of recurring themes here, an emphasis on case management, an emphasis on working with these women and children to address housing barriers that they face, everything from employment assistance, life skills training, mental health support, financial support, which could include application fees, moving expenses, security deposits and the like. And then very short-term rental assistance here would be the first month of a new lease, Dream Key Partners, this was an interesting proposal, and one of the things that we did was we encouraged local partners to look for opportunities to put forward collaborative proposals, and this was a good example of one. So under this arrangement, Dream Key would work directly with Freedom Fighting Missionaries. And Freedom Fighting Missionaries is a Charlotte-based nonprofit. They work a lot, they work primarily with formerly incarcerated members of the community, helping them on a path to self-sufficiency and housing stability. And the way this model would work is that individuals that have gone through the Freedom Fighting Missionaries homelessness-to-housing program would then be referred into a Dream Key educational series, which is focused on financial stability. So helping these individuals understand credit scores and how to improve credit scores, helping these individuals understand how to set up a budget, how to manage money, et cetera, et cetera. Coming out of the educational series, there would be some housing counseling, and on the heels of the housing counseling, there's the opportunity for a three-month rental subsidy as part of this program, and then followed by ongoing support, once they're in suitable housing. This would be designed to support 30 clients per year over a two-year basis. Social Serve is, of course, a local partner that we've worked with in the past successfully. And the focus here is really on housing navigation services. And I'll mention that this is something that was discussed today in the Great Neighborhoods Committee, as one among a range of recommendations that can help as it relates to source-of-income protections. So with the housing navigation services, it's basically a tenant landlord liaison service. So these folks from Social Serve are recruiting landlords and helping to negotiate leases, assisting tenants with financial barriers. And most importantly, they're staying in contact with these landlords once individuals are moved into these properties. So it really provides a great value to both the landlord and the tenant. You know, in our view, this is one very effective way to start removing barriers and increasing landlord participation in both things like tenant-based rental assistance, as well as housing choice vouchers in the community. So we'd love to find this opportunity as a way to build the capacity for Social Serve and the great work that they're doing. They can help with the chronic homeless population, they can help with individuals and families that are housed in hotels, they can help with individuals who have housing choice vouchers, and as we discussed in Great Neighborhoods today, many individuals in the community that have housing choice vouchers either face a scenario where they're successful in their search, but it takes them multiple months to find housing, and/or they're searching for housing for so long that their vouchers, in fact, eventually do expire. So Social Serve is playing a growing role in the community and doing good work. I would mention as an aside, that this is one example of an organization that Mecklenburg County is also funding through their recent allocation of ARPA. The Relatives, once again, an organization that the city provided some support last year with stimulus funds. The Relatives's programming is really focused on youth and young adults in crisis, including individuals in runaway situations and homeless situations. This funding would enable the relatives to hire and sustain two outreach workers over a three-year period. So once again, working with members of the youth community, up to 24 years old, but oftentimes teens and very young teens that are in difficult situations. These outreach workers would target reaching as many as 60 individuals per month over a multi-year basis, in order to better connect them to local resources, including things that the relatives has in place with some of their own facilities and other agencies as well. This, once again, is another entity that's been supported by Mecklenburg County just a couple of weeks ago, through their ARPA funding as well. And then finally here, Salvation Army, this one is focused on rental assistance, on their rapid rehousing programming, which targets women and families that are experiencing homelessness. This is set up as a short-term rental subsidy, generally ranging from three to 12 months, and it's estimated that this could support 60 households over a four-year basis. That's probably a fairly conservative number, it may end up being much more than that. This is for participants that are referred through Mecklenburg County's coordinated entry So I went through those fairly quickly, but I reinforced that we believe we received very strong recommendations. Staff is enthusiastic about the opportunities here. We think there are points of alignment with city priorities in terms of the housing Charlotte framework and the focus on members of the community at 30% AMI and below. When we discussed this opportunity in December, we made direct linkage to the 2025 Charlotte- Mecklenburg Housing and Homelessness Strategy, which has since been rebranded as a Home for All. This hopefully, at least in some small way, demonstrates another step in the right direction to help deal with some of those significant challenges. And as I mentioned earlier before, as it relates specifically to the Social Serve recommendation on housing navigation, that recommendation is of direct relevance to the source-of-income conversations that have been held with Great Neighborhoods. Just to state the obvious, we think that these recommendations are focusing on very compelling community needs. When you stack it up, and you think about the potential for the $10 million to have impact in the community over the next few years, and you think about the work that Social Serve can do with housing navigators, the work that the relatives can do with outreach workers, and then all of the individuals that can benefit from tenant-based rental assistance, as well as supportive services, it starts to approach roughly 3,000 individuals that can be positively impacted by this work. We also feel confident that we've got a number of proven partners built into the recommendation set here, and we like the opportunity also, with Dream Key presenting us with the partnership collaboration with an organization that I'm not aware of us having worked with in the past, but doing important work in the community, so we'd love to help activate their work even more. So I will stop there and receptive any feedback you have and questions you may have as well.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Heath?
Driggs?
Mr. Driggs?
Do you want, mayor, do you want me to call the names?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Graham, we'll just go around.
Yeah. Thank you, Sean, for the presentation. My first question is- My first question is, all of the stakeholders providing the services are tried and proven, and so I accept that, but were there any consideration to grassroots organizations that are not the usual suspects? I know there were a lot of individuals joined the Tent City, grassroots in nature, did a lot of good work, and so were they ever involved in the evaluation of submitting the applications or approach in terms of providing a service?
What we really reinforced was wanting kind of the established players to look for opportunities to partner with smaller organizations where they could. So I guess I would repeat myself and just point to the Dream Key and Freedom Fighting Missionaries as a great example of that. You know, there may have been other small examples along the way. Generally speaking, it was the bigger players that have the proven capacity, that have the expertise to deliver on this program, so we have a high degree of confidence that we'll get a good bang for the buck. But, you know, we were certainly receptive to organizations of all sizes presenting us with their best opportunity.
And then secondly, in terms of the report card and accountability, and so will these organizations come back to us and at some point in time to kind of update us on what you do in terms of where they're at in terms of the accountability for the dollars that they're receiving?
Yes, thank you for asking that. And it kind of reminds me of, I mentioned the work that we did with the United Way last year and the residents from the North End encampment, and, you know, they share information on the programming. We request information on the programming. For example, I can give you a sense for how all of the clients that were referred to us under that particular model, what the status of that is today. And in the proposal, in all instances, we're asking for these agencies to help us understand how they would define success and how they would measure success. So that would have been, that was part of our evaluation process. Each of them are slightly different, and I've jotted down some notes, but in all cases, as it relates to tenant-based rental assistance and supportive services, now, this is tough work, right? I'm stating the obvious, and 100% success rate is not necessarily feasible, but you want the highest percentage of individuals successfully moving through the process into either permanent supportive housing and/or self-sufficiency within the lowest possible relapse rate over the next 12 to 24 months. So those are the sorts of things that these agencies have highlighted as a focal point in terms of measuring performance, and it's the sort of thing that we'll certainly be monitoring.
And last question, Madam Mayor Protem. So how do we get the word out that these various organizations, same question I asked you earlier today, that these programs are available to the public, the resources are there, there are people there to help? How do we get the word out to the community?
Thank you, and I think the biggest part here will be partnering with these agencies who are very embedded in the community. And, you know, in many instances, they're essentially working with their current referral base, and we're providing funding for them to, you know, juice up their capacity to a degree. But for any of these recommendations where it's something that's new or new-ish, we'll work for them to make sure the right stakeholders are aware and that we're getting the word out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
So Sean, I apologize if you say this early, but I guess I'm trying to frame this a little bit. So I asked Sean, when we start to think about CARES funds, and I can't do all the acronyms, but CARES, ESG, CARES, C2BG, Emergency Rental Assistance, ARPA, CARES, SLFR, this council has gotten almost $100 million out into the community, so $94 million. And then on top of that tonight, Sean is talking about this roughly nine and a half, and there's still another 17 million that's related to housing and homelessness, and we haven't even began to talk about the May '22 $71 million of ARPA funds. So sometimes those graphs are so small, but again, this is just a small piece of what you've been doing over the course of the pandemic. Did I get that right?
You did, and in fact, you mentioned the 95 million, almost 100 million. That's really just in the homelessness and housing space, and a lot of that was emergency rental assistance, and most all of the emergency rental assistance that was provided to us was very restricted in nature. We did not have a choice whether to spend it on rental or other investment opportunities. So the numbers add up fast, and if you add in things that we did with small business and workforce development, there's another 60 million.
Thank you. Mr. Bakari?
Thanks. Well, I mean, first, I want to just recognize the good work to get to that point. I think there's an opportunity for us here with the manager to take this stuff to the next level. It's one thing to, you know, kind of measure the impact we've made by dollars flowing out, it's another by outcomes that have been achieved. So I think at level one, kind of next level table stakes, we should be asking every one of these partners to quantify for us exactly what the measurement they're going to achieve that they wouldn't have otherwise if those dollars hadn't come in. I saw a couple inklings of that in there with 30 households here or 60 there, and again, as you start to add that up, you realize the crisis, the need, is going to be much, much greater than what we're actually doing, but at least then we'll understand where we are. And not only is that good from the perspective of understanding that we're not just dropping money into good organizations to keep doing what they're doing, but setting them up and aiming them all as a bazooka towards a major challenge or thing we want to solve. And what that does now is, if we had done that a year ago or more, we'd be now looking at a heat map that said green, green, yellow, right? The people that actually achieved what we set them out to do before, and it becomes an indicator of greater confidence that, you know, continuing the work forward with them not only solves a part of the problem, but with high confidence they're going to deliver it. But if that's just level one, I think we need to go to a level two where, you know, there's duplication across a lot of that stuff. Several of them offer financial literacy capabilities. Like why don't we, with our money, kind of not just coming to the table with it, but also structuring where we see duplications for shared services and where we see gaps where no one's doing anything? And I think that kind of brings us to number three, the final level, and it goes to Malcolm's point, which is, you know, there's a lot of smaller organizations that pound-for-pound, when we look at the number of people they could impact, there might be 10 of them that could do more than one that's getting over $1 million, right? I think that kind of disciplined approach not only helps us engage others, it brings what our true power is here, which isn't just the money and throwing it out the door, it's being able to broadcast the word out to everybody and have them come to a single call to action, a single central gathering point, where we can start filtering them into the services, not just putting money to the folks that are in certain areas where certain people know about it and others don't. So, you know, again, I don't want to discount the work that it took to get to this point. That's great, and everyone that worked in staff to get to that point deserves a round of applause, but it's our job to push this forward. And if we just keep doing this year over year, we're never going to tee ourselves up for something bigger.
Thank you. Ms. Watlington?
Honestly, I'm so happy to hear my colleagues' comments in regards to data company manufacturing, so I love to see a target and an actual, are we red or green, and what are we going to do about it? So just much of what I was going to say has already been said. I did have a question in particular, considering that we're doing our financial partners' review in the upcoming budget session. Is there a way that we can see how much money we've distributed to each of our partners who may be designated as such, that we've already gotten our packet, or who may just be continual partners that we see? I'd love to understand how much money we are actually giving to each of these organizations overall, and to my colleague's point, what were the outcomes? That's something that I think we gotta get clear on going forward, because progress is great, but we need to understand if we are hitting our glide path to deliver what we like to deliver. A couple of years ago, Stacy, Lacy Williams started work with grassroots organizations to build capacity. It was part of the Save Charlotte work. I'd like to understand, where are we with that? What have the grassroots organizations been able to learn? Have they grown? How have their outcomes increased? Are they in position to get some of these dollars in any different way than they were back then? I'd like to see a report out on the status of that work. And then finally, when it comes to, I'll say, communication or marketing, getting this word out, I'd like to see something a little more formal than our usual channels. I'd like to understand from the communication department, what does this plan look like? Because to your point, there's been an incredible amount of work done, and people simply don't know about it, even as we think about Great Neighborhoods Committee this morning, where we talked about some of the homeownership and stability tools that we have. Many people just simply don't know they exist. So I'd like to see something beefed up, that we can be clear about how we're reaching people who we haven't reached yet.
Thank you. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I was interested to know, since we have that North MECC, did the county also get a distribution of these funds?
Thank you for asking. I should have clarified that earlier. Since we serve as the lead agency for this consortium, city, county, and the six towns, there's only one allocation under this program. So the $11.6 million of ARPA under this program came to the City of Charlotte for us to then work with our partners to deploy it.
For county-wide?
Correct.
Okay, good. I was wondering if more place applied?
And more place is affiliated with Roof Above?
They're under Roof Above.
That's part of Roof Above? Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be sure. Thank you. And one concern I have about an infusion like this is, we put all this money in, and we're not in a position to sustain that level of investment. Are we going to arrive at a point where we're no longer able to provide service to people? Because we get a lot of people enrolled here, and, you know, they're not done in a year.
Right, and these are, generally speaking, two- to four-year programs, so each of these has been designed with that consideration in place, because to your point, it can often take years, right, to move people on this bridge from being homeless into permanent supportive housing or self-sufficiency. So these have all been set up to serve a certain number of clients during that time period. Then when that time period expires, of course, there'll be questions, are there other community partners that can come in to provide continued support going forward?
So we can't arrange to have the recipients of these funds allocate the money in such a way as to be able to see their clients through until their graduation date, whatever that is?
That's always the intent, and I'd use the United Way as an example. In fact, the way that they're thinking about this in terms of serving 150 clients is to do it in a way where you're carrying the investment forward with those individuals, so you avoid a cliff effect, right? You wouldn't want to have someone in the middle of a 12-month need with only six months of funding, and then the tenant-based rental assistance evaporates.
Two more quickly. Are any of those particularly focused on veterans? Veterans are a particularly vulnerable group. Anybody serving them in particular?
I can't say that I recall a specific call-out on veterans, but most of the programming here is designed to serve the population in need. I mean, of course, on any given night, we have 3,000 individuals that are homeless in the community.
So I wonder if you could just follow up and tell me what the expectation is that veterans will benefit from these investments? And my last point was, the most difficult aspect of homelessness is that a lot of people in this situation don't want to be helped, or you put them into the men's shelter, they leave again. So I'm not sure how we answer this, but I'm just curious, as we go to make this large investment, are we tackling the neediest and toughest cases? Because short of just rounding them up, maybe against their will, how does that work?
Right. I would say it's a significant challenge, and if you think of the 62 clients that were referred to us last year under the CARES ESG programming with the United Way, I'm told that 14 of those individuals dropped out of the program along the way for various reasons. You know, some of them moved, some of them voluntarily dropped out, some of them there were behavioral challenges, and they were asked to leave the program, et cetera, so it's a long list. You know, there's a continued focus that we have on individuals that are meeting us halfway and have a desire to participate in this program, and we're bringing all the resources we can to bear. For the individuals that don't choose to participate in this, our agency partners have street outreach workers that really are perpetually trying to engage that community and look for ways to better pull them into the system.
So I guess we need very active case management, but anyway, that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Driggs, I would also add, and I think I'm right with this, Sean, there's the 2025 Mecklenburg Home Strategy, which has been renamed, what's the new name of it?
A Home for All.
A Home for All. And so even before, I guess, all the metrics are put together for that, this is basically jump-starting, if you will, if I'm saying it the right way. This would be going towards some of these organizations and strategies that I believe would be blessed by that group. Is that...
I think that's entirely fair. And the county has their own examples. We've each been trying to demonstrate a continued commitment to that work, even while that work is in between deliverable phases. So the strategic framework was already released for the Home for All work. That will grow now into implementation planning work. The implementation plan will have the discrete actionable recommendations, the funding needs, that will be later in this calendar year. But in between, we're working on source-of-income protection. We're looking for opportunities to leverage city and land for affordable housing. We are leveraging this funding here for support services and tenant-based rental assistance. So all of those things are of direct relevance to the vision of the 2025 Home for All plan.
Is I done, Mr.? Okay, Ms. Eschmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Some of my questions were already addressed around measuring the success of some of this distribution dollars. Sean, this is a really good report. I appreciate it. I know that Heal Charlotte is an organization that works at the grassroots level. Many of my colleagues are aware of their work, and I know they have sent us an email or have reached out to some council members about struggle that they have had working with the city or not being part of any of this distribution dollars. I would like us to look into that as we are working on this plan. Also, I believe a few months ago, there was a request from Refugee Services, or I forget the exact name of the agencies that works to house new refugees as they come in and help them settle in our city, and especially after some of the Afghan refugees where they were struggling to get housing. Is anything in this plan addresses that agency's request?
So on both of those items, for Heal Charlotte, I would quickly mention that we're in the process of developing our contract related to the nonprofit relief program that you approved earlier this year, $3.5 million. And by design, some of that is earmarked for grassroots organizations, and we'll focus on equity and inclusion as an investment priority area, the environment, and housing and neighborhood stability. So just wanted to mention that. And then on the Afghan refugees, I had some preliminary conversations with some folks in the two resettlement agencies here in town. It's been a while since we've spoken. I could take that as an assignment to follow up, but at this point, we didn't have anything specific that staff was bringing forward as a recommendation.
Got it. So yeah, I look forward to having a report on those two items, but great work. I certainly appreciate it. I know many nonprofit organizations have reached out, and I've sent them your way, and I appreciate that you follow through and you've been able to respond to all of their requests. I really appreciate the work that you have done and you continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Winston?
Thank you. I think, I just have one comment. I can go through the United Way slide, and it really does echo, I think, the sentiment of most of my colleagues have made. I would suggest, when this gets approved, for this and future councils to really go into kind of detailed reporting of the results and status of former hotel and encampment residents. Being that, you know, we know that homeless services in general is something housing the county, obviously, we were putting a lot of money and investment in this, but specifically with this group of residents and constituents, there is significant, I think, this is my opinion, of community concern about those residents. And being that we are going to put this money, our money, I know it's the county's money as well, city council is going to have to be responsive to the community about those specific questions, and it's not going to be good enough to just say, you know, go talk to the county to figure that out. Perhaps this is, again, another place where we work closer with the county. I know staff is working very closely with them, but from an elected standpoint, we don't necessarily have the ability to, we're only as able as you are to have the information to be responsive to our constituents, and I think we're going to need a different level of information about this particular... level of information about this particular group of constituents as this money gets spent. And that might, you know, interact with, again, some of the other groups that have, that are servicing this community. Maybe there's a way to work those, cross-pollinate those relationships. I don't know. Just putting that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else?
Yes. There's two more. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to, excuse me, piggyback off what my colleagues have talked about. As far as outcomes, we should be asking for outcomes from these vendors, or, and that should just be our practice. Anytime that we distribute public dollars, we should be asking for the outcomes, especially with this amount of money that's been given over the last two years. I also want to advocate for the grassroots organizations. As a small business and grassroots organization myself, I've said numerous times how hard it is to get a seat at the table. And Ms. Ashmira mentioned Heal Charlotte. There are organizations, I know Charles Robinson in my district, he distributed over 10,000 meals during the pandemic, you know, without any public funding. So, I, and we've been advocating for grassroots organizations. We know we have the program for capacity building. But, at some point, we'd like to see the lever to be pulled, and these organizations be given opportunities. And then, I do want to just clarify something that my colleague, Mr. Driggs, said, that many of the folks that are homeless want to be homeless or don't want, don't want any help. I just think we should clarify that. I don't know if that's data-driven, or if that's anecdotal. That's not, what did he say?
No.
Yes, he did.
A lot of people don't...
Yes, he did.
Basically, leave again when they get taken into a shelter or a care environment. And I know it's been a frustration for people engaged in homelessness that they basically relapse, and they show up under the bridge again. So, it's nothing against homeless people. It's just one of the difficulties of addressing the problem.
And you're right, there are behavioral health issues, especially in a state with, where Medicaid's not expanded, and individuals aren't able to get the medical treatment. Or, up to 50% of individuals who are homeless suffer from head injury. So, I just didn't want to leave that hanging out there, that individuals who are homeless want to be homeless. There might, there's deeper issues, especially in a city that's so unaffordable for so many. There are lots of individuals who are living in hotels, who are working. They certainly don't want to be there. It's just the nature of the lack of affordability in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just ask a quick comment, because I know we have to move on. Some of these agencies have mentioned to me that they have a hard time giving out the money when it's a last-minute need. So, a woman comes in with children, she's about to be evicted, and because of all the federal paperwork, they have a hard time using that money, using their money to help them right away. Are there strings attached to this money because it is ultimately federal money that would require these agencies to fill out paperwork and do all of that? Or is it fairly unrestricted, as long as they're using it per our guidelines?
I would have to look at the specific scenarios. I mean, there are definitely strings attached, for sure. But, the scenario you described, where we've approved the funding, we've released the funding, they're using the funding in accordance with our agreement, those scenarios, to me, sound like they should be able to move pretty quickly. But, I'd want to look at the specifics.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem, I think that you raised a really good point about the idea of how the federal funding works and how it can be moved. Because, it is an issue, I believe, when we talk about the federal funding that requires people to have an eviction to be able to get rental substance, rental assistance. And one of the things that I hope, that our NEST committee, which is chaired, or co-chaired by Kim Graham and Justin Harlow, we had a meeting with them, with Councilmember Watlington, to talk about some of these issues that stand in the way. So, with the federal funding, you have to have an eviction, and an eviction is longer than a bankruptcy, you know, blot on your record. So, how do you begin to deal with some of these things that government stands in the way of doing? How do we make some of those things possible? And I think sometimes, when we look at this capacity, I would like to ask, not only for the outcomes, but I would like to ask those organizations, what stood in your way of getting the work done? And where did we stand in the way? Are there things that we should have on our legislative package or bring to our own attention that keeps people in the area of homelessness because of rules that apply? I believe that there are opportunities for us to make some changes, to go to the legislature and say, "Why does an eviction stay on your record for your entire life?" I mean, I just think that there's some things that we should ask all of our partners, not just for the outcome of how they're doing the work with people, but I think we ought to ask, again, what stands in the way of them being able to do better work and more work for our residents? So, I think if everyone has spoken on this, then we go to the next item on our agenda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this before we move on? If not, then, Mr. Jones, who's up next?
So, Mayor, Members of Council, we have Sarah Hazel. She will come up and speak about the Strategic Energy Action Plan. And again, we've provided two bites at the apple. So, if you're concerned about not hearing from Allison, Allison would be available here, but also during the manager's report to talk a bit about the item for tonight. So, Sarah, you're up.
All right. So, I believe you all have in front of you a Year Three 2021 Strategic Energy Action Plan report. Sarah Hazel, Chief Sustainability and Resiliency Officer, I guess we should start with that. What I wanted to do today was to point out some highlights from this 2021 report and share with you that this year, Year Three, even though we've done these reports over the past three years since you unanimously adopted the CAPP, I think this is a special report because it really demonstrates some of the investments that have been building over time, some policy changes that we've made, and some actions that help us move towards a low-carbon and equitable future. So, if you want to get into any of the details in the report that we don't cover today, we'll be happy to come back and talk a little bit more about those things. But, I will say, before I dive right in, I do want to acknowledge that while I get the opportunity to be the one who presents this information, this is truly a citywide effort. Departments across the organization have played a really major role in some of the results that we've seen over the past three years, from CATS to Charlotte Water. You'll see some of those highlights in the report. And I also want to definitely take a moment to acknowledge Katie Rhodes, who's over in the corner, who's our Strategic Energy Action Plan Program Manager, as well as Heather Bolick, who leads our strategy around sustainable infrastructure and general services. So, a lot of the credit, putting this report together, goes to them and some of the actions, as well as the Strategic Energy Action Plan Operations Team, which has representatives from every single department in the city. So, just as a reminder, your Strategic Energy Action Plan that you adopted has two main goals. One is to strive to source 100% of municipal energy in building some fleet from zero-carbon sources by 2030, and the other is to become a low-carbon city by 2050. And what I wanted to do was just talk a little bit about how we're doing, striving towards that zero-carbon buildings goal. So, let me explain this pie chart to you. We've made significant progress over the past several years powering our buildings with zero-carbon energy. But, if you look at this pie chart, it sort of shows the split between zero-carbon energy and non-zero-carbon energy, and what we need to do to close that gap. So, if you look at the blue slice, which is the Pac-Man-shaped slice, you'll see that that is Duke Energy's existing zero-carbon grid mix. So, that's solar, hydro, and nuclear. If you look at the little purple slice, that's what Duke Energy is projecting, will be zero-carbon by 2030, based on their commitments and their own goals to continue to decarbonize their energy grid. And then, if you look at the other slices, this is really where we come into play, right? So, the green slice is the Green Source Advantage Program that you all adopted, not last year, but the year before. When that comes online, that will make up a significant portion of our zero-carbon energy. And then, the light green source is the on, the light green slice is that onsite solar slice. So, based on the last two budget years of investments of onsite solar commitments, that is the slice that they haven't come online yet, because once they do, they're actually going to shrink the size of the pie, which is our energy use. But, it'll make up that section. Then, we look at this red section, and really, this is the gap that we need to work to close when we're looking at our buildings. So, we close that gap through things like energy efficiency measures, more investments in onsite solar, more investments in possible new opportunities that don't exist yet, like large-scale offsite solar, like the Green Source Advantage Program. That slice can also be shrunk by a faster decarbonization by Duke Energy. And that's where really continuing to work with Duke as partners, as well as the Utilities Commission, can help us close the gap. So, I wanted to start with that, to sort of show you where we are now around our buildings. And then, the next couple of slides will touch on some of those strategies. So, here's a representation of our investments in solar energy. And what I'll say is that, once constructed, and you look at the, this map, you can see that with the FY22 budget investments that are currently in design, that will bring our total count to 25 solar systems onsite at our municipal buildings. One of the other big components of our Strategic Energy Action Plan is how we electrify our fleet. And a piece of that is electric vehicle charging. So, based on DOE data, we recently ran a report and saw that, right now, the City of Charlotte has actually installed and maintains and manages 41% of all the charging stations in Charlotte. Now, the majority of those are really meant for our fleet. But, while they're available and not being completely utilized by our fleet, we've opened them up to be available to the public so that that can help with the market transition to electric vehicles. And so, in 2021, we've seen a bit over 2,000 unique driver's vehicles charging at these stations. And so, when you take the number of electric vehicles we have, and you look at that number, you can guess that probably around 2,000 people have taken advantage of that opportunity to charge at one of our charging locations. So, back to our fleet. So, you may have seen that two e-buses are now on the street. So, we have our first two e-buses in service. And I believe we actually have 15 in our possession, which is really exciting. But, on the whole, and as of the end of 2021, we had 43 electric vehicles. So, as we're striving to hit that zero-carbon goal, we're really going to have to look at how advancement and technology plays out. And even now, with some of the delays because of COVID and the supply chain, we're seeing some delays in the vehicles that we've already purchased. But, based on your FY22 budget, we should have 88 electric vehicles by the end of this fiscal year. And then, one component that you'll see in this report is that we're also reporting out, not just on the number of vehicles, but on the carbon avoided from those, from those investments. And I think that's important. So, besides just electrifying our fleet, you've heard a lot from Liz, I know it's your last budget session, but investments in a walkable, bikeable Charlotte are investments in our Strategic Energy Action Plan. So, providing opportunities for folks to get out of single occupancy vehicles and into other modes of transportation, whether it's biking, walking, scooting, or public transportation, those all really help reduce our carbon emissions. And 40% of our emissions do come from transportation. And so, I just wanted to highlight a couple things here. This is a CDOT initiative, but the All Ages and Abilities Cycling Network, as of the end of 2021, we had about 14.5 miles. So, the more we can continue to look at how these initiatives intersect and support our carbon reduction goals, I think the better. So, let me just point to a couple programs and projects that we're pretty excited about, and that some of which you may have heard about recently in the news. So, we had a visit from Governor Cooper a couple weeks ago to look at an innovative pole bowl pilot project. So, the City of Charlotte partnered with you and CC, Duke Energy, and Central Lina to stand up a really unique project, which attaches a charger directly to a utility pole. So, this is a new technology, which is very interesting, because it allows for that energy source to be right there on the pole without having to run the conduit. So, it's an opportunity to look at how we can use some of the existing assets that the city and Duke Energy already has. But, even more so, it's, it's an opportunity to think about how we may provide charging in the future for folks who just don't have the opportunity to charge at home. So, let's say they live in an apartment that doesn't have access to plugging in. Could this possibly be a solution for that? So, we're excited to learn more as we continue with that pilot. And we'll have an additional location that will come online this year. Right now, we have one, and it's at the Ritz at Washington Heights. And then, we continue to work with economic development and the focus on the Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency Workforce Training Program. This is not the first year, this is our second year. And as of now, 86 participants from the program have graduated, and about 73% of them are working full-time. So, a lot to celebrate there as well. So, I think you may have seen this infographic before, potentially at a mid-year check-in. But, I just want to highlight that there are many recent investments in the Strategic Energy Action Plan that are really reflected in some of the actions that you see in the report before you. But, one financing first that I did want to highlight is that 2021 marked the first year the city included information about the CAPP and our bond offering documents. I think this is really cool, because it demonstrates our commitment to sustainability. And it shows that those are the types of things that investors are really looking at. And it's certainly an opportunity for us to demonstrate our commitment to the larger community. And so, two things to note here. We partnered with a nonprofit fourth, whose mission is to support the electrification of transportation and to provide solutions for folks across the country. And so, with this partnership, DOE grant was recently awarded at the end of last year that will allow us to work together to stand up an electric vehicle car share program at affordable housing. So, we're one of a couple cities that they're working with. And we're working hand-in-hand with our Department of Housing and Neighborhood Services and some of the partners that Sean was just speaking about, to really look at what good locations might be to stand up this DOE grant and to figure out how this could be a solution for good transportation, getting people to where they need to go, but doing so in a way that also supports our Strategic Energy Action Plan goals. And then, finally, the bottom side here, AC Triple E, American Council for Energy Efficient Economy, releases a scorecard every year. And really, the scorecard is a way to sort of measure where we stand against other major cities who are standing up strong sustainability and climate action plans. And we have moved up the ranks from 65 this year to 42, which I wouldn't typically highlight. You know, it's usually like your top 10 when you really start to highlight these things. But, this is a really significant improvement. We were named as the most improved city, and it is a big jump for one year. And I just wanted to highlight that, because I really believe that the investments and the commitment that this council has made is a big reason we were able to make that leap and start to be among some of the cities who've had programs and strategies for many more years than three in this kind of strategic capacity. So, just something good to highlight there. And we hope to continue to climb up the ranks as the years go on. So, two more notes. One is that this is the first year, because of your updated sustainable facilities policy, that we will be doing energy performance benchmarking and publishing that information online. So, you can expect to see this report by the end of the week. And it is a report on how our buildings are doing. This is a best practice to benchmark your energy against other similar buildings with the types of similar characteristics that we have. And the reason that this is such a great practice is because it not only allows you to sort of see where you stand, but it also allows you to measure over time your own progress and direct investments to where they can make the biggest impact. And going back to that initial slide, where you can help close the gap on our buildings' goals. So, finally, I think I'll end to say, we've been a part of the American Cities Climate Challenge cohort of cities, working to advance climate action over the past two and a half years, which has been a really incredible opportunity. John Thigpen, who's currently our climate advisor, has been a huge, a huge help in... John Thigpen, who's currently our climate advisor, has been a huge, a huge help in really moving forward a lot of the work that we've done, as well as Catherine Coomer, who now works for CAT. So we institutionalized Catherine Coomer, and she is now a part of the city team. But together, when you look at all of the actions that cities who are part of this cohort have done, we are projected to reduce our carbon emissions 32% from 2005 levels by 2025. And that is surpassing the Paris Agreement. So while cities are really the places where the largest emissions come from, the most emissions, we're also places that can demonstrate great impact, scalable solutions, innovate. And I think this report that came out from the Climate Challenge really demonstrates that a lot is possible within cities and city governments. And we're excited to see that we're among the cohort of folks who have made that possible. And so with that, I'll stop and see if you have any questions about anything that I have here today.
Okay. So Mayor Protem, if you've got hands raised, if you'll do the questions, that'd be great.
We do. Thank you. Great work. That's exciting news. I'm going to go to our, we have a couple of questions here, Sarah, so thank you. I'm going to start with Mr. Bakari.
Thanks. Do you have utilization data now that we've got a month or so under our belt from the pole vault thing?
I don't have that handy with me, but I can get that for you. We do, UNC Charlotte collects it.
Have you seen it, though?
So in the first week, we had about approximately one person using it per day. So the last time I saw it was week one.
So I'd be interested in us getting a full update on that because I think it is an interesting role for us to play, as long as we do it right. And from what I've been hearing anecdotally, there's the utilization just seemingly didn't make a ton of sense for the location that was chosen. I think if we want to promote things in those parts of town, there's other strategies we can deploy that will be much more effective towards the outcomes we need. But, you know, I have other questions, like who pays for the ultimate energy from the consumer use?
Duke Energy pays the energy for that pole vault. This is a pilot, so we have an MOU with them. So these are questions that we'll have to determine a long-term strategy for during this pilot period, but right now, it's Duke Energy who pays for the energy.
Okay. So if you can, because we're going to ultimately come to a point where we're going to have to make decisions at a more macro level, and I know that's what the pilot's for, and I appreciate that. But there's a lot of providers out there that come knocking on the door for all of us all the time, interested in coming to town and being recruited and things like that. And I think it's a matter of, you know, understanding what works, what models work, but also understanding what our strategy is going to ultimately be. So not only getting that utilization data, but for wherever else we have it as well. Government Center, for example, and, you know, who's paying for that and how we're utilizing those factors. I think we need to put all that together, and we need to benchmark it, both internally across our city, as well as with what other cities are experiencing, because getting to that point fairly quickly, I think, is going to be necessary. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Winston?
I just wanted to give a quick comment in regards to, you know, all the infrastructure stuff, the buses, low and no emission vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as the workforce development that is going to be needed internally to support these transitions. Councilmember Eggleston and the Mayor Protem and I were able to spend some time up in Washington last week and sat with our delegation, Senator Tillis, Senator Burr's staff, as well, I was able to meet with Congresswoman Adams. And I think Ms. Isle and Ms. Eggleston were able to meet with Congressmember Bishop. The meetings that I had, they were super supportive, very, very supportive of all of our efforts and our goals and strategies that we are putting out there. So, you know, I just wanted to encourage staff, you know, to keep our foot on the proverbial gas, or not gas, I guess.
Electric.
And just know that we have folks up in DC that are working on our behalf as well. So this is exciting things. Let's just keep pushing.
Thank you. Ms. Ashmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. This is a great report. I know that our committee got a preview of this report last week. And just, it was 2018 when we had adopted this unanimously. And look at the progress that we have been able to make. I mean, this is tremendous. I'm really proud of the team for the work that you are all doing, not just in electric infrastructure, right, transportation, buildings, energy generation, workforce development. We're checking off every single box that we had in our SEAP plan. So certainly, great work, but we also must realize that it's, in order for us to meet our 2050 goal, which is our community-wide goal, it's going to take community at large, it's going to take other agencies, nonprofits, business sector, all of us working together to meet our larger goal of for going carbon-free by 2050. Certainly, we are creating a model for others to follow, which is great, but I appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Great report. I was on the Environment Committee six years ago, seven, for my first couple of years, and we had no idea that we would be doing anything like this by now. So it's very impressive and appreciate your work. One thing that I'm wondering is, we have these goals, and there's reference in here to this. Do we have a dashboard kind of thing that would allow us to kind of follow our steps as we approach the outcomes that we want? Just to get a kind of orientation as we go along about how we're actually getting closer to what we set out to do. Do you have something like that, or can we do it?
So I think that's a great idea. We don't have a dynamic dashboard, but we have many spreadsheets and documents. So I think that that's really something that would probably be beneficial also for the community, and we could look at what it might take to do something like that.
Right. I think for us, and again, for the community, just to be able to say, you know, we said we were going to do it, and we are on a realistic path to get there. Would be a great ongoing way to report. The other thing is, we're on the verge of adopting the UDO. And so does the UDO have all of the things in it that we need in order to stay on that path?
So all of the things in it, I don't know. But what I will say is that there are, we worked hand-in-hand. The UDO team is great, aligning the Strategic Energy Action Plan, not only to the UDO, but to the comprehensive plan, Charlotte Future 2040. Embedded in the UDO are a couple really key things that we worked on. One is an electric vehicle charging ordinance. So if we go back to our map and we look at the percentage of chargers that we, based on the DOE data that we own and operate, it would add to that if the private sector is advancing charging faster through the electric vehicle charging ordinance component of the UDO. And then the other two pieces that I think are important are part of the TOD bonus section. So increased focus on energy efficiency and the environmental bonus that aligns to the Strategic Energy Action Plan. Then the other piece is a fee-in-loo proposal that would allow for developers to pay into that fund that could then support energy efficiency in low-income households. So starting to get at some of those strategies around how we look at the community and what some of the needs are there, because, to Councilmember Ashmira's point, you know, it's a community-wide and not just city as an organization.
Right. And the point of interface, really, between the community and us is the UDO, right? I mean, that's the place where a lot of the rules that guide us towards the place that we want to go, or at least the private sector, towards where we want them to go, would be. So I'm sure you're doing this, just point out, if there are any issues related to your work, we need to know about them. But thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Phipps?
Thank you, Ms. Hazel. I was just wondering, do we have any blended metrics to see how we're doing? Because, you know, I mean, our adjacent counties, how assertive are they in developing SEAP goals, or even McInnesburg County? I mean, are we satisfied that, I mean, because so much of the city is in the county, are we satisfied that with their pace of progress? I mean, do they, their buildings, their fleets? I mean, because I guess these emissions are fungible. I mean, they really don't know any real boundaries, so to speak. So, you know, to the extent that counties, other counties around us, I mean, are they, are you satisfied that they're doing, are they mirroring us in any way, or they're just looking at us and saying, this is lofty gold? I mean, you know.
I think that we are leading the way as the largest city in North Carolina, and because of your goals and leadership. But I do believe that the county has a 2035 goal that is similar to our 2030 goal. They're measuring progress. We meet with, I meet my counterpart from the county every other week, and we share information, and we collaborate to support each other's goals. And so I think that, you know, the market is also changing, and that really helps. So some of the projections are that by 2030, anywhere between 30 and 50% of cars that will be sold on lots are going to be electric, right? So like, I think that a combination of that and some jurisdictions putting forward their own goals like ours in and around the Charlotte area, I think, is really hopeful and is promising.
Thank you.
Mr. Eggleston?
And Mayor Protem, and Ms. Hazel, Tony, the buses that we've got, you said we've got two buses. You mean out in the community, not counting the airport buses?
Yes, yes.
So two that are out, and I assume we've put those on shorter routes for now?
So I'd have to defer to our CAT's director for what routes are on right now, but I will say, from where I sit, I see them, I feel like I see them every single day, coming out of the transit center. And some are still being used for training purposes. So I know that one of the goals was to test them on corridors of opportunity, but then they were going to, they're going to see every single route as part of the test to make sure that they can get the best possible data during this pilot that will enable some good plans for the future to do this transition responsibly.
I know at some point, and I know the technology is changing by the month, but, and improving by the month, but I know at some point, there'd been discussion that we had range concerns on some of our longer routes in being able to use these. Though again, I know that's improving daily. The airport ones, we've said we've got five out right now towards our ultimate goal of 50, says we've put over 100,000 miles on those, so call it 20,000 miles per bus. Do you know, or would, and maybe this is a question from Ms. Gentry, but do you know if we've seen comparable performance or reliability from those buses in terms of, side by side with the buses that we're replacing?
I would have to get back to you on those types of metrics, but I do know that the airport has seen cost savings related to what it takes to upkeep a bus and fuel a bus from their five buses. And they are set to have five more buses by the end of this fiscal year, so I'm not sure how many of them they currently have in service, but soon, 10 buses if.
Yeah. I think it's impactful statistic to, I mean, it says here, saved over $52,000 in fuel costs, which is awesome. I think it would be beneficial for us to also be quantifying the amount of cost difference in terms of maintenance upkeep, downtime, things like that, too. And hopefully, we see additional savings there. But I think whether it's a savings, a slightly additional cost, or more or less a wash, I think that's another thing we need to measure so that we can demonstrate the overall benefit of the buses beyond just the benefit they provide for air quality. My only question for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Winston has a follow-up question, and that's it.
One thing to note, that the promise of electric vehicles is the long term, that they don't break, or they break less. So, and you got to pay less to repair those broken mechanical parts. So some of those just won't get captured until a decade down the line. And I will say, I recently moved down by Arrowood in South Tryon, and they are running those electric bus testing routes up and down there. So I see those, and that's pretty far away from the transit center. So let's just keep going. I did want to, Mr. Driggs, mention the UDO. And it reminded me, while I don't know if this would be directly related to the Strategic Energy Action Plan, I would like a follow-up. It's a question I asked back in November, when we got our first draft of the UDO. Our policies right now, they do mandate certain combustion engine infrastructure as it relates to the building of housing. You have to have certain aspects of your garage to be a certain way. And I was wondering if there would be future considerations to include electric vehicle charging in residential building codes, as that will be necessary for our citizens to be able to participate in that market in the future. When will it become ubiquitous kind of technology and/or regulation? I'd like for us to think about that. Like I said, I put that answer to the staff back in November. I have not gotten a response. I'll take a look over there with that. Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So thank you, Sarah. I want to say that your entire team and the way you've organized and built the collaboration to do the work around, within the organization, has been exceptional. And I really am glad to have all of those recognitions made by outside agencies that are assessing our progress. So thank you for the work we've gotten done today. And, Mr. Jones, I think we talked about having Allison participate or present on the mapping after, during the manager's report, because it is now 6:24. So if we can get downstairs to the chamber in the next eight minutes, maybe we could start only about 10 minutes late. So why don't we move downstairs to the dais, and we'll start there? Thank you for joining us for the Charlotte City Council March 28th Business Meeting. So as you can see, the council is there and I am not. I want to thank everyone that has sent me well wishes on the birth of my new grand girl. She's adorable. So glad that I'm having the chance to be with my family for a while and still be present for today. Today's meeting is being held in accordance with the laws that are required for meetings under our emergency order. I think I am along with Councilmember Newton and participating remotely, and all the requirements for notice have been met. We're going to first have introductions by the Charlotte City Council members, and we'll start, and I'd like to introduce myself. I am Vi Lyles and I serve as Mayor.
Good evening, oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Julie Isel, Mayor Pro Tem, serving at large.
Stephanie Kelly, City Clerk.
Happy Monday. Dimple Ashmira, at large.
Happy Monday. Braxton Winston, serving at large.
Good evening. Renee Johnson, District Four.
Greg Phipps, at large.
Marcus Jones, City Manager.
Mark Eggleston, District One.
Malcolm Graham, District Two.
Tara Picari, District Six.
Good evening. Victoria Watlington, District Three.
Ed Driggs, District Seven.
Patrick Baker, City Attorney.
Good evening. Matt Newton, District Five.
Thank you, everyone. We begin our meeting with an invocation. We do this, we are recognizing the diversity in beliefs and faith in our community, and this invocation is really for our own benefit with, for our deliberations. And tonight I want to recognize Councilmember Renee Johnson for this invocation and Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could all bow our heads.
Dear Lord, as public servants, we must focus on what brings peace and joy to all of our residents and what sustains, protects, and helps our families and their families flourish. We must strive to make the weak become strong and the strong become compassionate. So on this day, we ask that you provide for their needs, including peace in these troubled times. We ask for healing and comfort. We ask that you look upon those who are suffering and help them. Heal the sick and hurting, deliver those who are burdened and heavy laden. We ask for your, to give us the ability to feed the hungry, provide safe and affordable housing and employment for those in need. We ask for answers to stop the violence. Lord, we ask a special prayer for the people of Ukraine and for people everywhere who are being harmed by war, hatred, greed, or violence in the streets. We thank you for the many blessings seen and unseen that you provide to us daily. Lord, bless our city, bless our country, and bless our planet. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. We have two recognitions that we'd like to make as a city tonight, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Johnson again.
Madam Mayor, we just have to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We do need, everybody, please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for the reminder, Mayor Pro Tem. We have two recognitions that we'd like to make as a city tonight, and I'd like to recognize first, Councilmember Johnson, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Julie Isel for these recognitions. So Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the privilege, and thank the council for the privilege. This is the third year in a row that we are acknowledging and recognizing Brain Injury Awareness Month. March is Brain Injury Awareness Month, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to do this. Tonight, there will be buildings here in the city that will also be acknowledging and recognizing Brain Injury Awareness Month. So if you see any of the buildings on the skyline that are lit in either green or blue, which are the two colors for brain injury awareness, that is an acknowledgement. So thank you. Whereas more than 2.8 million Americans sustain a brain injury every year, and over 5.3 million Americans live with a brain injury-related disability, and whereas over 80,000 people in North Carolina will sustain a brain injury this year, and many survivors will be left permanently disabled, and whereas acquired brain injury includes a traumatic brain injury sustained from blunt force, non-traumatic brain injury from strokes, aneurysms, tumors, infections, and anoxic brain injury, whereas active duty and reserve military service members are at an increased risk for sustaining brain injury compared to their civilian peers, and whereas research on abused, on abused women shows that 40 to 90% of the victims of domestic violence suffer physical injury to the head, whereas research shows that up to 50% of homeless individuals and 25 to 87% of incarcerated adults report having experienced a physical injury to their head, and whereas public awareness and understanding of the dangers, prevention, and treatment of these injuries and effects on the family are critical to help aid individuals in recovery. Now therefore, we, Vi Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, and George Dunlap, Chair of the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Brain Injury Awareness Month in Charlotte and Mecklenburg County and commend its observance to all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable nurturing homes and communities that foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources that they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, we, Vi Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, and George Dunlap, Chair of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we, I believe that we have, we have a speaker that will be speaking on the issue, Kelly Moriarty, but I believe Sean Pagano is here in person to accept the proclamation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Moriarty. Thank you, Mayor Lyles, and members of City Council. I'm a registered nurse and the Injury Prevention Coordinator for Novavant Health Presbyterian Medicine Center. My background is in pediatric emergency nursing as well as forensic nursing, and over the years I've worked with many children who've experienced abuse and neglect in the hospital setting, often seeing them on their worst days of their lives. I hope that the work that I do now in injury prevention can help children and families in our community learn ways that allow them to grow and thrive. This is why I have joined our community partners in raising awareness with the Mecklenburg community on this important topic of child abuse prevention. I'm a very proud member of a team that focuses on prevention and ensures child abuse and neglect never occur in the first place. Science tells us that caring connections matter in...
caring connections matter in developing healthy children and healthy communities. When our community works together to create caring connections with children and families, we can change, we can create the change necessary to develop the community of strong and resilient children. The Mecklenburg Child Abuse Prevention Team is a team that does just that. We are a collaboration of local organizations that serve children and build awareness in our community about prevention. This team believes all children deserve great childhoods and that each of us play a role in making sure our community is a place where children and families are able to grow and live in peace. Preventing child abuse and neglect means helping parents have the knowledge, skills, resources, and support needed to provide safe and nurturing environments for all children. Each family is unique, but all parents and caregivers need support at times. Our community partners and all of our community members can help by ensuring children have positive experiences and families have the necessary resources to foster these positive experiences with our children. The Mecklenburg Child Abuse Prevention Team thanks you for taking time to recognize and support this effort. April 1st is the start of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and we hope that each of you will take time to learn ways to help our community grow and thrive. Many of our organizations will be planting pinwheels and offering education and resources throughout the month of April to raise awareness and encourage healthy communities that allow our children to have a happy childhood. Starting next Monday, April 4th, we will be planting a garden of pinwheels at the Courthouse Flower Bed, as well as other locations, including Pat's Place and Novant Health Presbyterian Medical Center. Pinwheels are used as a nationwide symbol of happy, healthy childhoods, which every child deserves. These pinwheels are meant to create awareness to the critical issue of child abuse and get the community talking about the role we can be playing to keep kids safe. In April, because of our Mecklenburg County team effort, there will be pinwheel gardens across Mecklenburg County at schools, parks, hospitals, and businesses. Our team will also be sharing prevention strategies and tips through a month-long social media campaign on our website, mek4kids.org. We encourage you all to lead the way in spreading the message of prevention through our Queen City. Thank you so much for our support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moriarty. We are at the point of we have our public forum, and we have this, where we have people come in and speak to the council as a whole. At this time, we listen very carefully to what you are asking and petitioning us for, and then we will respond with a written communication that will come to you as a result of your speaking to us tonight. With that, we're going to allocate two minutes for every person that's going to be speaking tonight, and I'd like to start off with Luke Giddes. I may have not said that correctly, so Luke Giddes or does.
Am I good to go? All right. My name's Luke Giddes, resident of Charlotte. The skateboarders of Charlotte need more facilities provided for skating. This could be either in the form of donated land for us to build our own skate park on, in the case of Eastland DIY. It could be a series of small skate parks funded by the city located in various neighborhoods around the city, or it could be a centrally-located, high-capacity, properly-budgeted skate park somewhere in Uptown. The skaters feel disenfranchised due to Charlotte's lack of suitable facilities, and recently, the Eastland development taking away a beloved location where skaters could go. With Eastland closed, there will only be one free public skate park in the entire city. We, as skaters, have not received much in the way of communication or acknowledgement that our needs are being heard, but I offer this. Charlotte has lots of great cities and towns nearby to reference for how to solve this problem the right way. In Mooresville, the city listened to their skate community's needs and allocated funding for a skate park big enough to accommodate everyone, held a public design input meeting, and included the skaters in it so they could have their say in the design of the park, and then provided a temporary place to skate while the new skate park is being built. Asheville is currently expanding their public skate park in downtown to accommodate higher crowds, all while allowing their DIY skate park in the River Arts District to flourish instead of developing over it. Raleigh, Lexington, Chapel Hill, Durham, Greensboro, Kannapolis, Morganton, Wilmington, Boone, Waynesville, all of these and many more cities and towns have provided skate parks to their communities and seen immense success. I have no doubt that Charlotte has the means to do so as well. It all starts with those who are in power, being receptive to the conversation, so we can end up solving this the right way and not end up with another underutilized park such as Grayson or Renaissance. So please work with us. We just want somewhere to skate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Janelle Coswell, and then she will be followed by Gary Marion. If you would like, both of you would like to come down to the podium.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, and City Council members, I am speaking to you today as a current member and former Chair of the Charlotte International Cabinet regarding the need for an actionable international business strategy for the city of Charlotte. I join fellow cabinet members who have spoken and will speak to you in this public forum about this issue. There is an urgent need for Charlotte to have an international business strategy that addresses city engagement in international business recruitment, retention, and growth. This strategy should align with the Charlotte Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan and respond to the current needs of more than 1,000 foreign and immigrant-owned businesses in the Charlotte region, employing over 81,000 residents, contributing $3.3 billion in investment since 2017. The Charlotte community has 274,200 immigrant residents, including 19,752 immigrant entrepreneurs, contributing $2.7 billion in taxes, with $7.4 billion in spending power. In my work hosting business and government leaders from around the world through the U.S. Department of State, I promote the city of Charlotte as a leading city for international business, entrepreneurship, and investment. As a member of the 85-City Global Ties U.S. Network, I'm always claiming with pride that Charlotte is number one, as it is. We do not want Charlotte to be falling behind cities like Denver, Houston, Atlanta, and San Francisco. They have, they all have executed and active international business strategies. Charlotte currently does not. The Charlotte International Cabinet is also recommending that the city of Charlotte join other global cities and formalize its commitment to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and incorporate the SDGs as a component within the recommended international business strategy. My fellow cabinet member, Nalan Mulder, will be speaking soon to expand more on this. We urgently request that this matter be brought to the Economic Development Committee for an actionable implementation plan. Two minutes. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Graham, I'm looking at you.
Mr. Marion?
I'm a 62-year-old disabled veteran. I suffer from PTSD. It's a wound that will never heal. I moved here to live a peaceful, quiet life. November 14th, 1981, Marine Corps Training Session in Twenty-Nine Palms. We shot our own people. We had casualties. That's why I have PTSD. My unit was also in the Beirut bombing on my birthday, October 23rd, 1983. Forty years later, November 14th, 2020, on my very own property, I was assaulted by my neighbors, sociopaths, alcoholics. Incredible, the most uncivilized people I ever met. The police showed up after I took a beating by the five people, had serious injuries. The police officer, Henry Burr, never had any interest in writing a report. I spent more time talking to the police officer than I did getting my you-know-what whooped. Now, I made 22 phone calls, 20 phone calls in 22 months, and all the officers that showed up to my house were white. They did nothing for me. It took 22 months for a community service officer to show up at my house after I sent an email in October of 2021. I sent a lot of emails to a lot of people. I did radio in Boston. I've always been an activist. I've done a lot of things on West Craighead Road in the surrounding area. I even helped change the policy in 2019. Thank you, Lockit. I requested a meeting with Chief Jennings. Racial bias has been a problem going back to Chief Ker Putney. It's still a problem. This guy never, he wrote that it was "in a fray." I got my butt whooped on my property, and he called it "in a fray." In a fray is an instance of fighting in a public place that disturbs the peace. That's what happens at a club at 2:30 in the morning. This is my own property.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. I understand that Chief Jennings is aware and is working through this issue with you.
I'll be waiting.
All right. Our next two speakers are David Hands, Hands, and Toni Immeral. If you would both come down.
My name is David Hannis. I'm speaking about an illegal fire station that's about to be built on my street. Basically, how would anybody like to wake up one morning and find a fire station built in your backyard? That's about what's to happen with the residents of Woody Point Road. Woody Point Road is a quiet residential street in southwestern Mecklenburg County that is, you know, is classified by the city of Charlotte as a local residential street. In 2001, the city of Charlotte took over the control of Woody Point Road, and shortly after they took over control of Woody Point Road, they changed the classification of the street from a local residential street to a minor collector's street. This change in classification was done illegally, and because of this change in classification, it now allows a volunteer fire department to be built on our street. The city council is in the process of ratifying shortly Unified Development Ordinance and a new policy map. On that, on that new policy map, Woody Point Road will be returned to a local residential street, so the city has recognized their mistake, but between the time that this new policy map is ratified and today, that fire station will be built. And again, it's going to be built on a local residential street, a dead-end street, a totally inappropriate location for a fire station, and this needs to be dealt with by the city council immediately. I would, I would like to ask for a follow-up from a member of the council to discuss this further because it really is a miscarriage of justice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hands. We've gotten a number of your emails, and I will ask the manager to follow up again with you. All right. Ms. Toni Immeral?
Yes, good evening. This is Toni Immeral, and I'm really going to direct my conversation to you, Mayor Lyles, because what happens next in this situation will be largely up to you with the support of your council members, and hopefully, the city attorney is also reviewing this information. I've placed before you, had placed before you, a folder that has some information in it with regards to criminal liability for false representation and obtaining building permits under false pretenses. Any number of us in this room who are homeowners deal with HOAs and HOA issues, and while this matter includes an HOA issue, it includes the matter of the law being broken against the city of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, and the homeowners in the southwest community. It involves unlicensed contractors signing their names to applications to get building permits without a license and illegally using general contractor numbers to acquire those license or that permit. Now, we've been directed to contact the state. The state has been contacted, and you can see that the state has verified that no general license contracts or licensing has been acquired by the individual who received the, a building permit, and we know the limitations of what they can do. So I am here to implore all of you to get engaged in this conversation and to do something about the law that has been broken, because the city of Charlotte is a victim, as am I, and the 534 homeowners that live in that community, because our monies have been taken, the project was botched, and I encourage you to ask me questions to dive more into this issue.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will follow up again on this idea of licensing and the building permits that are taking place and get some information about that. Our next speaker are Diane Krebs and Nalan Mulder. If you both come down to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Diane Krebs, and I've lived in southwest Charlotte, District 3, for 26 years in the crossings community. I come here this evening to talk to you about a robbery I've experienced. My own neighbors have robbed me. I've tried to get other neighbors to help me, but they're complacent, too busy, or don't want to get involved. I've attempted city mediation on two occasions, both times to be dismissed as a civil matter, that they cannot engage, but wish me luck. So why was I shut down? It's because the minute the words homeowner association is mentioned, the door is shut. So how did I get robbed? One of my neighbors took the hand of a predatory property management company and delivered them to my community. This opened the door for complicit behavior of other like-minded residents that joined in the fraud and deceit for self-benefit. The property manager immediately identified our excess reserve funds, and less than, and in less than a year, more than $160,000 disappeared from our association funds. Sounds like a movie plot, but it's reality here in Charlotte. The scheme to defraud is not unique to my community, and the crime will not stop unless existing laws are enforced and new ones created. I've enclosed in my folder a case law that mirrors exactly what's happening in the crossings. It's the United States versus Leon Benzer. I'm here today to implore you to help. In accordance with the bylaws of my community, the board members are elected to provide for administration, maintenance, preservation, and architectural control. Instead, people's rights have been violated, laws have been broken, fraud, theft, and collusion has occurred, taxes have been evaded. If it doesn't sound of a concern to you, some statistics that the number of homeowner association...
Ms. Krebs, thank you. If you can leave the remainder or send that to us by email, your remarks and your examples, that would be very helpful as we look into this.
Thank you.
All right. Nalan Mulder?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, and the City Council members, I proudly serve on Charlotte International Cabinet, representing international and cultural diversity we have in Charlotte. Charlotte continues to gain national, international attention for its attempts to become a truly global city. As an advisory board responsible for promoting Charlotte as an international city, we commend the city on its commitment. Global cities focus on attracting and retaining foreign talent and investment, and Charlotte is making great progress in both areas. I believe we can do more. In addition to the recommendation to develop an international business strategy, I'm here tonight to share another recommendation we, SCIC, have been working on to further Charlotte as a global city. In 2015, all United Nations member states adopted 17 global goals, officially known as the Sustainable Development Goals, or SDGs. For example, quality education, decent work and economic growth, industry innovation infrastructure. These goals have the power to create a better world and build a better future for everyone. The city of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County are already doing significant work which aligns with these goals. The Charlotte International Cabinet is recommending that Charlotte formalize its commitment to UN Sustainable Development Goals, incorporate the SDGs as a component within the recommended international business strategy for the city. The city of Charlotte should localize its support for these goals by signing on as a partner for the UN SDGs, along with many other municipalities around the country and the world. In addition to signing on to support SDGs, the city of Charlotte should highlight UN SDG alignment to its mission, responsibilities, and long-term plans, as well as conduct periodic voluntary local reviews, as done by LA, Orlando, Pittsburgh, and New York City. We respectfully request this matter to be brought to the Economic Development Committee for actionable implementation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if we could hear from Sonia Watts and Craig Brown. Ms. Watts and Mr. Brown?
Good evening. I am Sonia Watts, and I am here today to say that we appreciate the city mayor, Mr. Marcus Jones... City manager, excuse me. City manager, Mr. Marcus Jones.
That's okay. It would be nice to be confused to be Mr. Jones every now and again.
Okay. Mr. Marcus Jones and his team for working with our leaders to come to a positive budget conclusion. As a city employee, I am proud to be a part of the progress for myself and my fellow union members. By the grace of God, today is a new day for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, city manager, and esteemed council members, I come before you today. Thank you, Marcus. What you're doing means a whole lot to the city employees. You didn't turn a death ear toward us, but like I always tell you, the work is just beginning.
Thank you.
With that being said, what I have to bring today, we living in precarious times. The world is in shambles, and it's an opera, but right here in Charlotte, we stood, persevered, and endured a pandemic. I had it twice, been quarantined three times, but when I had come to work and was able, I was there. These workers are worth their weight and goal. They deserve everything that y'all can give them, because they stood and persevered for you. We are service, y'all are also service wise councils, because y'all have to pave the way for the future. And with that being said, the future is a mystery. Past is a memory, but the present is a gift, so we got to live together in this gift fairly across the board. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much. Our next speakers are Rory Pegram and Derek Davis. Rory Pegram and Derek Davis.
Good evening, council. My name is Roy Pegram. I work for the city of Charlotte, Solid Waste, and I work for the CBD. I'm one of the guys that take care of Uptown. Uptown looks good. I work hard. We work hard up there to make sure that Uptown looks good, but when come payday, I go home miserable, because I'm making $1,800 a month. I live in a hotel now, and that's $1,300. That leaves me with $500. I got a card note, I got insurance, I got other miscellaneous. I can't even afford it, and I work hard. I got bad knees and all, and come to work every day to serve, but then I can't get served. All I get is more work, more routes, but I can't get nothing, and I'm tired of just surviving. I want to live. All y'all up here are living good, and some of y'all are living well. I'm struggling, and I go to work every day. I'm involved in the community. I do community work. I gotta catch a bus now because I gotta save my gas, because I don't have enough money. Come the weekend, I don't have enough money to do nothing. This point's now, I go into the lines where the homeless people to get something to eat to take back to my hotel, and some of the people say, "Don't you work for the city?" Yeah, but they don't know what I make, and I go home sometimes and I'm upset. It's mentally, physically draining to me, and then I gotta pump myself up to go to work Monday through Friday, not knowing how I'm going to make it. It's crazy, but I get a lot of compliments uptown about how good it looks. People coming from out of town, "This city looks great." I get compliments, but I go home sad because I can't afford to live in Charlotte. I can't afford the hotels, the apartments, the ones I can afford, the waiting list is too long, and then the ones that I can get, they check my credit, my credit. I gotta, thank God, I got a second job at night that helps pay the rest of my bills. Sometimes I don't know what I'm going to eat, and when I'm working uptown, I help the homeless. I give them money. I give them love. I just ask you guys to take consideration on what we going through, because we work hard to take care of the city. All we ask is for you to look out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pegram. Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'd like to ask the city council to allow the UE-150 city workers to be present during the new hires orientation. So when you hire a city worker, we would like an opportunity to speak to them at orientation. I believe it helps with employee retention, because a new hire, it impress a new hire to know that they have a union in place with their interest in mind. It's common knowledge that union-paying jobs are better than non-union-paying jobs, and that will also go further with impressing a new employee. The Bureau of Labor has done multiple studies proving that fact. Orientation is where, part of orientation is where you learn about benefits, and I don't know a benefit that's better than being in a union. I think that goes, I think that it would be a good rapport between the city workers and the city leaders if you would recognize UE-150 as a union, because EU-150 is not going anywhere. So I also believe it would help with the grievance process. If there's any grievance with any city worker, it'd help the city, and it'd help the city worker. It'd also help the city worker understand the grievance process. I would like the city council to view the union, I mean, to view the union and the city worker as an investment into the city, and as an investment into the infrastructure of the city. You're invested in competent workers. You save money by having competent workers.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
We have, our next two speakers are Shaquanita Gaddy and Thomas Young. They will both come down.
Good evening. I am Shaquanita Gaddy. I have been with the Solid Waste Services for almost four years. I am a senior, SEO senior operator. We stand in solidarity for change. We are dealing with harassment in the workplace. We are being joked and act upon. We are spoken to inappropriately. We are not judged based on character. We are sexually, verbally, physically, mentally, emotionally abused. We are bullied. We are disrespected based on our gender, sex, identity change, and workplace. Information provided being misled to other managers. We are treated unfairly, not given positions that we've earned, even with the degrees or the skills for the position. Promotions are often given to buddies or friends. Managers don't post jobs if they are done in secret, most times. Management posts jobs they don't want. They give it to the hourly employees. We are underpaid. We're overworked. We deal with management, some who put Solid Waste employees in a hostile environment as follows. Managers have told employees how tight their butt looks in a pair of pants. It has been said, "I can see your private parts, private area in the front of your uniform pants." Grabbing someone's butt. Telling a female coworker how he can turn her back into a female.
Let her finish.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. I want you to understand that this council and this organization does not tolerate harassment of employees, and we will certainly follow up with you, the information that you're providing to us. Mr. Young?
He is not here. Will she please be allowed to finish?
We have, no, I have another speaker to follow. Since Mr. Young is not here, we have an order by which our next two speakers are Anthony Forni and Jerome Wagner. Ms. Anthony Forni?
They're coming downstairs.
And Jerome Wagner.
How you guys doing? I'm an employee of Solid Waste, and today is the day where we need change in the city. No favoritism. As my fellow employee just spoke, where supervisors get mad and send you to another duty over and over and over, because they don't like you, but that's not your duty. And most importantly, raises 10%. We need it in the city. 75% of city employees cannot afford to live in the city that they live in, that they raise their children in. How do you guys feel about that? 75%? But yet, when it's said and done, after the parades, we're cleaning up CBD district. You can't even tell this city was dirty. Solid Waste don't sleep. We got an overnight that's cleaning. When we wake up, they're going back to sleep 24 hours. We're running. We need their respect. We need our wages. We need higher pay to support our family. We lost a coworker in the line of duty that we do. It's dangerous out there. You guys have seen it. Marcus Jones, you have visited us and have seen the hard work they were putting in. Snow, rain, 30 degrees, 90 degrees, 100 degrees. Solid Waste is out there cleaning the city. 200,000 homes every week, every week, served. And yet, we still are struggling, and I say, and I end it like this, let's not go back to 1963 in Memphis, Tennessee. Let's move forward, July 1st. If you, whenever you are engaged in work that serves humanity, and is for the building of community, and serves the community, it has dignity and worth.
Thank you, Mr. Forni.
With asking that you give us what we're worth.
Our next speaker is Jerome Wagner. Mr. Wagner, you're our next speaker.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jerome Wagner. I'm the lead organizer for 350 Charlotte, which is an all-volunteer climate justice-focused group. I'm also a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Climate Leaders, a network of environmental, faith, climate justice, education, and business representatives that grew out of passage of the Strategic Energy Action Plan. Last year, the climate leaders formed a SEAP Accountability Committee to promote attainment of the city of Charlotte's sustainability and resiliency goals. Our intention is to both support the city's efforts and to challenge the city to do even more. So far, though, we don't have enough information in hand to declare that the city is on a secure path for success, to first of all, have zero emission buildings and fleet operations in 2030, and to reduce emissions to less than two tons of CO2 equivalent per year per person citywide by 2050. We hope to receive more substantial information from the Sustainability Office in the near future to inform our assessments and advocacy. Some of the information we would like to get includes, what is the city's plan for wide-ranging and deep energy efficiency retrofits in older housing stock? And also, what is the city's overall vehicle inventory and the budget to reach SEAP's carbon-free municipal fleet goal by 2030? I'd like to make a couple comments on behalf of Angela Gray, who was going to speak next after me. She noted, "We can and must ensure that locally grown foods are available and affordable to everyone, and that the equipment for transportation and storage does no harm to the environment." And lastly, I'll just comment that as an engineer, I know the types of resources that must be dedicated to this type of effort like the SEAP, and I advocate more funding for the Sustainability and Resiliency Office. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. That concludes our public forum with 15 speakers. We really appreciate hearing from everyone, and you will get some follow-up information based upon your requests and your comments in the near distant future. So now, we have concluded our public forum. We will now go to the business meeting, and the next, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing and decision on the McDonald's cafeteria and mini-center historic landmark designation. We're going to open with a public hearing to consider this historic landmark designation, and then go to the next item, which is adopting ordinance. We have a speaker signed up, Christopher Dennis. Mr. Dennis?
Is he online? I think he's just here. I think he's maybe online if we have questions.
So, Mr. Dennis would speak if there are questions for him. So, Mr. Councilmember Graham has asked to be recognized. So, Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It goes without saying that the decision on the McDonald's cafeteria and the mini-center for historic landmark designation goes to what we're trying to do on the Bated Fort Road Corridor, which is to make sure that individuals there are part of the change and not victims of it, but more importantly, to protect the heritage, the history and the tradition of the corridor. I know that site very well. I had the opportunity to know Mr. McDonald's and eat at the restaurant, and certainly what Christopher Dennis has done to preserve that building for adaptive reuse, as it is today for the Chase Bank and the other retail spots there, is spot on. I think Mr. McDonald's would be very, very pleased in terms of the efforts that Chris has made. I think the community, well, I know the community is really, really appreciative in terms of the development that is there, but more importantly, that as a community, we take pride and privilege to protecting heritage and tradition. This public hearing, this decision that the council will make in the near future, is to step in the right direction to ensure that occurs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the council that would like to be recognized?
Motion to close the public hearing and adopt...
An adoptive ordinance with an effective date of March 28th, designated property... I'm sorry, Mr. Phipps?
Yes, I have every intention of supporting this particular designation, but I do have a process question I'm curious about. I know in the past, I'm not familiar that we received a public, we had a public hearing and a vote on the same night as these designations. Have we changed something? Is this a fast-track process or something, or what?
I...
Mr. Baker?
I feel like this has been done before, and I don't know of any law that prevents you from doing this, having the hearing and voting. you from doing this, having the hearing and voting tonight. But I feel like this has happened before, and I'm used to having this happen at the same time.
We have done this.
Yeah, I don't recall. All the public historic designations that I've seen, I thought we've had.
I think we usually set the date for a public hearing, which we would have done prior to this.
That's my recall, too.
Yeah, and so we would have done that prior to this.
Thank you. Without opposition, I mean, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Eggleston for items, and a second has been made, and now we'll have a roll call vote for this item. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Absolutely.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Thank you so much for doing this special recognition for McDonald's Cafeteria. I think it is very important to the part of the Opportunity Corridor of Baton Rouge Board, so thank you, everyone, for your support. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing designation, and public hearing and a decision on the Charlotte Quartermaster DPO and Area Missile Plant Historic Landmark Designation. We have, we'll conduct a public hearing, but we have no speakers signed up. I believe that Damon Hemingway is willing to answer questions if there are specific questions by the council, but no one else signed up for the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will have a roll call vote. Are there any speakers from the council on this item?
No.
A man.
All right, not having any speakers, we'll start with our roll call voting. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is item number 11, a public hearing on a resolution to close right-of-way between 3427 and 3439 Oakwood Avenue. We are conducting a public hearing for this closing and adopt a resolution to close the unopened right-of-ways as noted. Is there, do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
A man.
Motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item A and B. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item, I would like to actually take and move the city manager's report when we get to the section where we're presenting the mapping item. So, item 15, Mr. Jones, is it okay to move your, Ms. Allison's, report there so that we can follow it?
Yes.
All right, if that's okay with the council, we'll go ahead and proceed. We have the next item, which is the City Code Update, Adopting Ordinance Amending the City Code by Adding Language Specific to Criminal Reinforcement. Earlier today, we had an opportunity to talk with the city attorney, and I'd like to recognize the city attorney for a recommendation on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Based on conversations that I've had with several of you since the last presentation that we had on this item, I would like for you to consider the following amendment to the motion. I would like for you to consider accepting the motion that's printed, but accepting, taking out, that is, certain ordinance recommendations that we have made and deferring those particular ordinances to your next council meeting, which is your strategy session on the 4th of April. The specific ordinances that I'd request that you accept from tonight's motion include Chapter 4 Aviation, Sections 4-32 and 4-110; Chapter 6 Businesses and Trades, Section 6-270 Dance Halls; Chapter 10 Health and Sanitation, Section 10-100 Public Health Nuisances; Chapter 14 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 14-235 Playing or Loitering Around About Railroad Property; and Chapter 15 Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Sections 15-26 Camping, 15-157 Youth Protection Penalties, and 15-251 Carnivals Violations. Some questions have been raised on those specific ordinances, and we'll have some written materials for you all in the next couple of days in advance of your next council meeting, where I would recommend, if council was so inclined, to take up the passage of those ordinance amendments at that time.
So moved.
Second.
Did I hear a motion?
And a second.
And a second. So, any discussion about the changes recommended by the city attorney? Earlier today, when we had this discussion, it was really around the idea that council members, I think Mr. Winston, and I don't know if others, had sent in a request that we do have this information around those that have been selected by the city attorney or designated to come out so that we can have a conversation about what that means and why it's being recommended, and if there are any changes that the council would like to have. So I believe this helps us with a better process and better information before going forward. So with that, I will have a roll call vote on this motion that was made.
I think you have a couple of speakers, Madam Mayor.
Oh, you have speakers, okay. Our speakers are, if you raise your hand again, and then I can see you.
Mr. Winston, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Johnson and Mr. Winston. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I spoke to the city attorney earlier about this, I asked you, would there be a slide to make it more simple and transparent for the public with your reading the information? I'd ask about a summarized slide so that individuals could see that we are pulling certain items out, and it's not, the information's just not so ambiguous. Is there a slide so that there's a visual aid for the public?
So, we had a slide that had all of the ordinances on there, but this sort of happened at the, this afternoon during agenda review, the particular plan, so we haven't had the chance to change that. But we will produce one and make it available for the public so that they know which ordinances were passed tonight and which ordinances, ordinance amendments have been deferred for a week.
Okay, thank you. One of the things we heard from the public was criminalizing camping on public streets. So that's, we want to make sure that the public knows that that's one of the ordinance that was pulled out.
For further discussion, yes.
And the purpose was never to criminalize homelessness.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Further discussion, right?
Further discussion, we're not voting on that tonight, right?
Right. All right, Mr. Winston?
Thank you. You know, in a constitutional democracy, one of the most sacred responsibilities of a government is to decide when to limit the inalienable rights of people. Of course, we are municipal government, so we have the federal and state laws that generally take care of that. And then, of course, we have to provide ordinances for wherever holes are left out. The city attorney has made recommendations on 14 places. Well, first, the General Assembly, in their wisdom, has said, hey, we need to take a look at this. It shouldn't be the kind of status quo that you automatically have to criminalize and take people's rights away, because, of course, when you criminalize something, that means you're able to arrest somebody, you're able to prevent their free movement within society. And again, that is a sacred duty. The city attorney whittled down literally every line, every line in our municipal code, and has come back with 14 recommendations of places where he suggested that we have a criminal penalty that we had to reconsider. With this motion tonight, we will reinstate eight of those 14 areas where we have municipal criminal penalties. Now, I'm very comfortable with those eight places because we have had robust community conversations about many of these places. We have had stakeholders at the table. We have had legal opinions given about these issues. We've had staff response, and we've had the ability to talk about these things under, as colleagues. You know, you will remember that we have spoken about animals, our noise ordinance, for example, and dealing with gun violence. Those are examples of things that we will rekind of put those criminal penalties on. But the eight items that we are pulling for future consideration and to get more information, we just have not had that level of input and/or information. So this gives us the opportunity, as a council, to get more of that feedback from staff and decide the best route forward, again, in taking on this sacred responsibility of us in government. So, thank you to Attorney Baker, Madam Mayor Protem, and Madam Mayor Lyles for helping us figure this out, how to go about doing this in a very intentional way. So with that said, I'm ready to vote.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the motion? If not?
Mr. Bakari has, Mr. Bakari has a question.
I just, I'm going to go along with this. We talked about it today. The only thing I ask is that we don't table this for long. This is not something that, I disagree with the phrasing of criminalizing homelessness. We are giving law enforcement officers tools, should the city decide to use them, which they haven't in the past in multiple instances, to be able to deal with situations as they arise. It's not like we have some blunt tool out there to do it. So we're taking away a tool in something that is criminalizing breaking the law, right? So we have, we will have laws on the books that will have no enforcement ability while this is not there. So, like I said, we discussed it today. I'm all on board with having a robust dialogue, but this does not mean that we just punt on this, and now all of a sudden, we've got laws on the books that are not enforceable and that are meaningful laws for a purpose. If you're nodding, as long as we're in agreement, then I'll support it.
One week.
I believe that what we've asked the city attorney to do is to have this information outlining the foundation for the recommendation on, at our next strategy session, which is the first meeting in April. So we will look for that document to come back. So is there anyone else that would like to address this issue? All right, we have a motion on the floor for those that were noted by the city attorney. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. The next item on our agenda is, let's see, the next one is, if I can find it. Item 14 Amendments to the City's Plan for Housing and Community Development to Approve the Proposed Amendments to the City's Fiscal Year 2020 Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan and the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have our roll call vote. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Ms. Eschmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Yes.
All right, the next item that we have is to adopt the Charlotte Future 2040 Policy Map, and this is where we would like, I'd like to recognize the manager to introduce the staff for our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So I will ask Allison Craig to come up, and she will get us started with the backdrop of the next vote that you're about to take.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of council. The policy map is an important companion to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It provides citywide direction for place-based policies. Upon adoption of the policy map, it will guide future land use decisions, rezonings, and capital investment. It will not change existing entitlements and existing zoning. Adoption of the map is an important step in the planning process, and afterwards, we will move into area planning, where we will provide parcel-level review of the different place types. We will examine community goals, look at community investment needs in the different area plans, all alongside the community members. After the map is adopted, we will go, and we're going through community area planning, there will be a way in which city council, city staff, and the community can amend the map through their own application, as well as through the rezoning process. I'm often asked how the UDO fits in with this. So the UDO is scheduled for adoption in July. Upon the effective date, which we're thinking is six months, maybe even longer than that, after the UDO is adopted, the zoning districts that are not conditional in nature will translate to the new UDO districts that are contained in the draft UDO in Table 3.1. After that, the, any rezoning decision will continue to look at the policy map and making, for guidance, and making decisions about rezoning, just like we do today, like what we will do once the map, the policy map is adopted, we'll just be using the new UDO zoning districts. So we'll have a couple years of area planning, where we'll go into the community and really talk about that parcel-level review of the different place types. And at that point, we will, when the community area planning process is complete, we will begin an alignment rezoning process, similar to what we did with TOD a couple years ago, to align the policy map with the UDO zoning districts. And those policy map place types will now have been updated through the community area planning process alongside community engagement. So we will be developing sort of cheat sheets and flow charts to be able to help you talk with your constituents on how the process works upon map adoption. And I want to say in conclusion that it's important to adopt this map tonight. This allows planning to continue, allows us to move forward with the area planning process. We'll begin launching the Community Area Planning Academy, as well as begin developing toolkits for communities to get an advanced start on the area planning process. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have Alicia Osborne here, who is the project manager for the Comprehensive Plan, and I also have Dave Petten here, who leads the rezoning process to answer any rezoning questions that you may have.
Motion to adopt the Charlotte Future 2040 Policy Map.
We have a motion and a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second. All right, is there any discussion or questions?
Yes.
Watlington?
All right, Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
And I guess tonight, if you'll just send me a list? Or should we just go around the dais?
No.
Let the mayor protem handle this.
Okay, Ms. Watlington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I wanted to say thank you to staff and to District 3 community leaders, because I know that you all have been very engaged with the different groups, Northwest Community Alliance, the Community Benefits Coalition, Still Creek Resident Association, and more. They've reviewed many times. I've seen a lot of back and forth. I had the pleasure of being involved in several of the community meetings. Special thank you to our Planning Commissioner for District 3, RJ Harvey, who has been extremely engaged with the group as well. While we have been made abreast of all of the comments for each district and understand that some fall within the policy map, some fall within the UDO, and some questions will be answered in the later process, in the more specific process, it is the feeling of many other residents who have been engaged to this point in District 3 that they would much prefer to continue the process without officially adopting the map. So as to avoid any administrative hoops they may have to jump through with learnings for the area map. So with that, I will be voting in opposition to this particular motion, but I do look forward to continue the work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Watlington. Mr. Winston?
We have Ms. Eschmira next.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got a list here and did not have Ms. Eschmira next. Ms. Eschmira?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, a couple of comments on this policy map. We have heard loud and clear from our community benefits coalitions, our development community, and our neighborhood community that this map is not perfect. But I appreciate the work that's been done by our planning staff and our council members to be intentional about the outreach. And I understand there will be continued work in progress after the map is adopted. So I do want to recognize certain community members who have consistently reached out to my colleagues and I, Ricky Hall, Ms. Janet, Jimmy Vasaloo, Dr. Sylvia Biddlepatton, and others, who have been reaching out to community to ensure that there is equity in engagement from all parts of our city, and intentionally from District II, III, IV, and V. So I think, from what I understand from staff, from Alicia and Allison, that those conversations will continue as we develop the area plan, so that those voices will continue to be heard. So taking all of that into consideration, I would be supporting it, but I just want to go on record saying that this map is not perfect, and additional conversations continue as we develop this community area plan, for all the voices to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esmira. Mr. Winston?
Thank you. Thank you to the community, thank you to staff, and thank you for council for continuing our push and figuring out how to deal with growth. I think an important point, to me, the most important point to remember is that we are creating a planning approach, a planning process, that has many different components of that planning process, putting them together and making them work together. So if you think of it from an iterative phase, when we adopt this map, you know, if you start with the 10 goals of the Comprehensive 2040 Plan that we adopted, then you start to really dig in and understand place types and how we have different growth strategies, then you will understand how those growth strategies, we're putting that on the map right now, so that we can achieve those 10 goals with the Comprehensive 2040 Plan. Then as we adopt UDO, we will be able to go into the zoning process and really understand how to get those small area plans. So we really wrap our heads, again, around the 10 goals, the place types, and growth strategies that will really, I think, get us to grasp what we're doing tonight and really help us as a community better understand how we can each individually and as groups plug in to the existing parts of the planning approach and the future parts of the planning approach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Driggs was next. I'll let him go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I agree that the map is not perfect, but in my mind, it's good. I think we're 80% or 90% of the way there, and I don't believe that we can progress further in the abstract. I think we need to adopt this thing, and we need to have a robust process for continuing to work on it and refine it as issues come to light, and that we have practical situations to which we can respond. We can't do this all in the abstract. So I'm going to be in favor of adopting it. I did want to acknowledge the input that we've received from the developer community in making this a workable plan and a plan that will achieve the goals that we have for it. A lot of work has gone into this. The UDO is not fully baked yet. There are issues that we're still discussing that I think we will work out. But I feel good at this point that we're on a path that will lead us, over time, it's going to take a couple of years to fully implement, to a new organization of how we do things that we badly needed. I do want to acknowledge also what a huge undertaking this is, has been, and how much work has gone into it so far. So congratulations to you guys. It's great work, and look forward to supporting this tonight and to continuing our work on the map and the UDO. Thank you, Allison.
All right. Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, or?
I think that's it. Yeah, I'll go ahead, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I won't belabor the points that some of my colleagues who are supporting the maps have said, the map has said, but I'll also be supporting the map, because it just is sort of given illustration, because I know it's complicated work. It's, again, just to remind everybody, we're really catching up on what we haven't been doing for the past 45 years, which is planning a city, and I hope we'll never fall behind. I won't know it, I guess, if we wait another 45 years, but I think, you know, just to illustrate what this really means at this point, is if you were going to build a house and you got blueprints for your house, you conceptually had an idea of what you wanted, and it's drawn into the blueprints, but you're going to change things, right? Not until you see it on paper is it going to really resonate what that looks like, and then you go back and make those corrections. So this map is a really important starting point for the future, and then to get into it more deeply as we work on the 15 different area plans and get the parcels right. So, you know, Ms. Craig, you and your team have worked really hard on this. You acknowledge there will be changes, and I just want the public to know that we know that and we are planning for that, but we've got to move forward with this as our basis. So, thank you.
Mayor, I also have my hand up.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, thank you. I had a question for Allison. If we, if this is adopted tonight, when would the map be effective?
July 1. That's correct, Alicia?
Yes.
So the place types will be effective July 1?
That's correct.
So much of, many members of council have acknowledged that there's room for improvement, and it's not perfect. So between July 1, when would the next phase be effective? Or when would any improvements be effective?
So anyone at that point can go through and request a map amendment, and so city council staff or the community can request a map amendment, and so that would update the map. A rezoning decision would also ultimately update the map. And then through time, the community area planning process would then update the map as you go into that detailed review with the community.
So, and the community area plans can take up to four years or so?
We're thinking two years. We're still working out the details of that. Those are generally done as an interdepartmental effort, bringing staff from different departments in to do that together, and so Alicia and her team are working through the details of that, but we're estimating about two years.
Okay. And what percentage of the population has given feedback on the mapping?
That's a good question. I may have to defer that to Alicia.
Thank you, Allison, for deferring the hardest question of the night to me. I'm not sure I can answer what percentage of the population provided comments, but in your briefing book, we provided the number of comments that were received entirely on the process. Initially, we started the process with a survey that went out to every resident, asking them to be a part of the process and receiving their feedback on a survey, and for that, we received about 4,700 responses to that, to that particular postcard that went out to over, well over 300,000 property owners. So that was a response rate for that. In terms of the iterations of the map, we had about four drafts of the map, three working drafts, and then the map that you're approving tonight. And in total, we had about 6,700 comments that we received in over 20 different engagement methods. And so it's a little bit hard to say what the percentage of the population from the total comments, because they were in-person meetings or online comments based on the map, so that could have been one person, groups of people. It just depends, but we can track definitely the number of comments we received.
And so I also want to acknowledge the hard work of Allison and Taiwo and Alicia and the entire team. It's not about the work or the quality of work. For me, it's really about the public response. And I know that there's been lots of engagement, but what we're hearing from multiple constituents is that they're asking for more time because of the lack of response. This sounds like less than, I don't know, the math, 2% or of the public has actually commented? And then of the comments, how many of those comments are being implemented? So I just think that while the staff has done a great job, we represent the public, and I don't know that we received enough public response, and I know that the message has gone out, but if the, at some point, if the receivers are not responding, perhaps the message might be simpler or might be different. So I won't be supporting the mapping process tonight, especially if it's going to be effective now, and then, and the residents will be held to that, the standard, until something changes, which, you know, could be two to four years.
No, no.
Well, possibly. I mean, there's a couple of ways to change it, but one of the ways to change it would also be in the community plans, could be two to four years. So we've heard from large constituents that are asking us, okay, we'll clarify. When would it be changed?
So what Allison mentioned is that the map would be effective in July. That gives us a little bit of time to work on some internal processes and how we communicate what the map means and how people can use it. There will also be a policy map amendment process that becomes effective July 1, that will allow staff, residents, and the community to propose a change to the map, as well as through the community area planning process and through the rezoning process. So there's three ways that the map can be amended once it becomes effective. And not to say that there will be some in-depth analysis that goes along with those considering a change to the map, because we have to remember, we just spent the last three to four years creating the Comprehensive Plan, where many residents participated in establishing the goals that this map is based on. So it's not a map that started from scratch. It builds upon the engagement and the principles and goals that were established in the Comprehensive Plan. Many of our residents participated in that, and as you guys know more than anybody else, there was very much some robust discussion around that plan. And so the community is aware of the goals and the principles of the plans. This puts it into action, as well as the Unified Development Ordinance. And without doing that, we can't move forward with the community area planning or the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that Ms. Johnson raises something that kind of reminds me that 45 years have gone by, and some of the places that we have under current zoning are probably those that weren't enacted or changed or done differently or didn't have any attention paid to them, because there are a number of places with the current rezonings that we have around the city on the map now that do not fit what we would call is the best use for them. And it's interesting, because I think, as the Mayor Pro Tem said, 45 years, we're so fortunate to have a team that has automation and the ability to reach out to people, and people have a way to come into this process. 45 years ago, we didn't have that. You just had, here's a map and this is what you are. And I believe that the change that we're talking about, the percentage of our public people that are really engaged in this will have an opportunity, but also people will see their individual, own their, the characterizations of their own properties, and will have the opportunity. So I thought that last paragraph in the agenda, which talked about it being updated and revised on the basis and how it would be done, was really important for us to communicate, as Ms. Johnson says, that there, so that there's opportunities for people to have input. And now that we have that more definitive way of looking at it, so this has been a real labor, but I don't think that we want to have, I've been quoting Malcolm Coely a lot these days, saying perfection standing in the way of good in some respects. So we didn't get it right 45 years ago, and we're probably going to get it better this time. Is there anyone else to be recognized that would like to be recognized?
Mr. Phipps, Mr. Phipps and Ms. Watlington?
Oh, I'm sorry. Then we'll come back to Ms. Wat.
I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, I was asking questions to the staff to clarify, and I think there was a little more confusion. So I said three to four years to be able to change it. We talked about the, you said in July it will be effective. When would be the next time a person could give input? Is that going to be, start in July, or what's the duration between the change?
So as of July 1, someone could come in and request a change to the map.
Okay. And how long will that process take? Because they, the changes that have been submitted or the comments that have been submitted now, not all of them are being considered.
So what we have, what we will have to do is design what that process looks like. That, we're thinking it's an application process, similar to what we used to have back in the day, a plan amendment process, where a constituent or staff member or a community member could file an application with the map describing what area they wanted to change, and then it could require them to have consent from a certain amount of people that are around them, very similar to what a rezoning petition might be, some similar characteristics and process. It could take one to three months, I'm not sure yet, but we definitely want to make that process available as soon as the map is effective. And then we'll begin the community area planning process as soon as the UDO is adopted. Over the summer, we'll start that process in the fall. And it depends on the issues that may arise in the community area plan. It might not take two years. It depends on the level of conversations between the neighborhoods. It may take a year. It may take nine months. It just depends on the level of conversation that needs to be had. We're saying two years as the worst-case scenario, but it may be sooner than that. We're not sure until we get into the details of the neighborhood.
So let me just state from a layperson's term, when I said two to four years, there was all this pushback from council members, even some laughing. But when we peel back that, the layers of that question, the appeal process has not been designed, and again, if it's the community area plan, you said it, you stated up to two to four years. So again, I will say it again, if, once this is implemented, if there's something that is not, that residents are not happy with, and we've heard from residents asking for specific changes that haven't been implemented, it could take two to four years for a change to be made. So again, I won't be supporting it. I do appreciate you guys' work, but the public does not feel listened to, of the ones that I've heard with, and some very large constituents, and the input that has been, been given, there's much of it that's not being implemented. So I would ask for a deferral for the approval. Thank you.
Can I directly just ask a question on that? Allison, shake your hand.
Ms. Craig, did you want to comment?
I have Mr. Phipps next. I-
Motion. Apparently, there was a motion for a deferral.
Is there a motion?
No, there's not. Just hold on. Ms. Aysel, can you run this for a second?
All right, Mr., I have Mr. Phipps and Ms. Watlington, and then I will go to you, Mr. Bakari.
And Mr. Newton's before Ms. Watlington, Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Phipps, then Mr. Newton.
Mr. Newton. And I don't know, because Mr. Bakari will be next, because Ms. Watlington has already spoken once, so that's the question, the order that I would have.
Ms. Craig is standing here, Madam Mayor, so she could make a comment. I think she wanted to respond to-
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Craig.
No, I don't think that I was, except that Councilmember Johnson mentioned that it would take two years for someone to be able to make a change to the map, and that's why we're saying that someone can request that change through that amendment process, or if we have community conversations that warrant city staff to then submit, you know, a request to change the map, that can also be led and initiated by city staff, too. So there is a process. It will not be, you have to wait two years until the area planning process is complete.
So, Mr. Phipps, followed by Mr. Newton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've heard the phrase, I've heard "perfect" being bandied around the dais here. I don't know, I don't know that we could ever really come up with a perfect map. I think that this process, as it moves forward, would present us with a more accurate map. But I'm curious about the community planning process. I would hope that during that process and at the end of it, that we won't really revert to what has happened in the past with area plans, that you work so hard on them, but, you know, before the ink is dry, you know, you get some inconsistencies with the plans. I would hope that this process would eliminate a lot of that, but I already got constituents that have been writing, that have been writing, emailing me, they're looking forward to this next phase. me, they're looking forward to this next phase, because they have some revisions that they want to see entertained. And the only way we can do it is we have to move forward with this process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Mr. Newton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman Johnson. I do appreciate all the hard work for many years that our staff has engaged in throughout this process, but I do harbor concerns whether this has been fully vetted through the entire community. There has been so much confusion with so many folks that I've spoken to as to, as to this, the plan, the mapping process, the UDO, and I feel like oftentimes, all three have been conflated. And just to kind of underscore the point here, I also fear that amending this map after the fact, so community engagement to do that will be burdensome and difficult for those who pursue that, rather than us making sure that we get it right now. So I'm hard-pressed to, to support this right now. I don't know if I misheard it, because I, I thought maybe I heard that there was a motion to defer, which I would be in favor of seconding. If there's not, I would like to make a substitute motion to defer. I, I feel as though, or at least understand what the will of the council is here, but wanted to, to put that forward in case we have a change of hearts or, or through continued discussion here decide that that is something that we would like to do. So I will make that motion to defer this to a later time to allow more engagement with the community, to make sure that more questions are answered and more people have the opportunity, not just to understand exactly what we're talking about here, some specifics of it, but also an opportunity to weigh in further on those specifics.
Mr. Newton, thank you. You've made a motion to defer. Could you actually give us a timeframe? I mean, because that could be infinitum, the, just opening it, because we change in people, so help me with the, with the timeframe that you're suggesting, please, in the motion?
Sure. It, it, it's hard for me to say. I, I, the I hear.
We have to, it's your motion.
You have to.
Maybe we keep talking.
Well, I hear the colleagues, the I hear Councilwoman Johnson, the I hear Councilwoman Watlington. I know I've heard concerns from my community, and I think oftentimes, what has occurred here is there has been an awful lot of confusion, once again, between the three policy items we have talked about, that being the comp plan, that being the mapping process, and that being the UDO itself. Conflation amongst the three. I don't know, but how long.
No, that's fine.
Have answers within the community address and then implemented, so codified within whatever it is that we consider. I would like to think that it can be done within, say, three months, but I think to put a timeframe or a specific timeframe on that would also be unwise. I think for the time being, what I'm motioning for is a deferral until we feel comfortable as a council moving forward and understanding or feel comfortable that the community has had that opportunity to weigh in and have all of its concerns addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. So Mr. Newton's motion is to defer the adoption of the mapping. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ms. Johnson has made a second. I have three speakers. Mr. Bakari is next, followed by Ms. Watlington and Mr. Driggs. This discussion is still around the motion. It could be the substitute motion or the motion, I guess.
I will frame this in the terms of why we shouldn't defer. And if I am wrong, please correct me, because this is my understanding and why I'm comfortable. And I think, I hear your points, and I got comfortable in this way, so this is why I would say, let's not defer and let's approve it. But if, if I'm wrong here, then perhaps I'll change my opinion if we should defer. So it's really simple. They've done a mapping exercise to get us to this point, and there are three layers of things that will happen after this, if I understand it correctly. One is, people will immediately say, I've been mismatched, and it's technical corrections. It's not like a rezoning or something. It's just like we found in the last couple of months that the South Park area around Phillips Place was mapped into a community center, and it should have been a regional center. It was quite clear, everyone immediately recognized it, and they changed it. So from my perspective, how I got comfortable is that staff basically said, for those things, which almost this entire process has been, take it from the old vernacular and put it into the new. And if they mess that up, our commitment, and tell me with a head nod or an answer, is that we'll do that quick. If we made a mistake and somebody went from this term to this term and it wasn't the same thing to get us to that point, we'll solve that in days. We'll do it within a month, whatever the quickest thing where we batch those up and get them. But the problem is, people aren't paying attention. So we've got to just do something, because they've done everything they can to make them pay attention, and maybe they'll pay attention at the point in time when, oh my gosh, you've changed my thing, all right, now we'll do it. But even if they don't pay attention for three, four, five months, we'll make technical corrections as they happen. So that, to me, takes everyone out and doesn't hurt anybody, and now we're just there. So now there's this bucket of people who want a change. They want something different than they had before, and that's fine, too. We're going to create better processes for them to say, okay, I want to upzone my place or downzone my place, but they kind of like a rezoning, have to go get a little bit of approval and some buy-in from around them, and they'll have a lot of support for the first time where they didn't before. So now individuals have that ability, but that's changing it. And then level three is this massive level of the community plans. And the community plans might say, we want something different than we had before, and once they're done with that plan and it's adopted, that's going to come in for a wholesale change of upzoning and downzoning. But again, the only people we could possibly hurt right now is if we mistakenly mapped something from what it was before to today, and they have commitments that, we've reached out to everyone we can, but we have this amazing process in both levels, one, two, and three, that they didn't have before. So that's, I mean, am I, did I say anything wrong?
No, you're good.
So that's how I got comfortable ultimately with it, which is, the plan could be perfect, it could be 80%, it could be 90%. The point is, they've basically got to the end of the rope that they can do with carrots and making people ultimately pay attention, and now they've got to do it, but they're going to have a really quick process fixing it. So that's, that's how I came to understand it, and that's why I think we should absolutely just move forward, because we're not going to hurt anyone with our mistakes in this. It's only the changes they're going to want, which they would want those changes anyway.
All right. We have a new person that signed up to speak before we go back to Ms. Watlington and Mr. Driggs. Mr. Graham?
Point of order is a different motion.
I have not spoken yet.
We need to vote on the substitute motion.
I think there's still comment going.
We've got comments. The substitute motion at this point.
I was speaking to the substitute.
Right, but point of order, I have not spoken on the substitute motion that's on the floor yet, so I don't believe that I would get usurped or jumped, if you will.
I'm fine with it. If you guys are in the room and you're okay with Ms. Watlington and Mr. Driggs, then Mr. Graham, it's fine with me. I'm sorry that I can't.
Just to speak to the substitute motion, Ms. Watlington would be next.
All right.
I appreciate what you said, Councilmember Bakari. For the residents that I've spoken with in District 3, the issue here is that it's not, well, I'll say it this way, it doesn't seem to be mutually exclusive. The process can continue. The concern is this gray area around what it would take. I hear if it's a technical change, it's a quick thing. It sounds like, I think about speed bumps, for instance. You got to go around and get all kinds of folks to sign the papers, and we end up with these delays about trying to get a speed bump where people know it is, just because the administrative task. So I would, I know that you already explained a little bit, Ms. Alicia, of what the process could look like, but can you clarify, is there an event in which, beyond a technical change, that it will require council action to make these amendments, or what does that look like?
Each amendment to the policy map has to come to council for a vote.
That's what I thought.
And there's inherent in that process, community engagement already. So we will not be arbitrarily revising the map in, you know, our cubes or whatever. This has to come before council for an action, every last one.
Thank you for that. That's the concern of the folks out in the communities, is that that is, in their mind, a Herculean feat. And if we know that we're going to make adjustments, we're going to continue the process anyway. There doesn't seem to be any reason that the adoption has to occur to prevent the process from continuing.
Okay. Ms. Ashmira, and then Mr. Graham.
Yes. Mr. Driggs?
He has chosen not to speak.
Actually, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I just have one comment. There was a question raised as to how many people had commented. How many people individually have you actually spoken to about this? I mean, we're not talking about thousands, I assume. So if we're going to question the validity of the outreach process, then you have to ask yourself about how representative those conversations that you've had with concerned individuals are. We're never going to get to the point where everybody's happy. And the thing that I think we really need to stress here, in case somebody gets the wrong impression, nobody who is unhappy about the maps is going to have to wait two or four years. They're just not. There are processes that take different amounts of time to make these corrections. We're not going to get it perfect before we adopt it. And so I just feel that we could be, four months from now, we could be sitting here having exactly the same conversation, and I think we need to make this step in order to keep our progress towards a better plan on track. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Graham?
Ms. Ashmira was before Ms. Craig.
Okay.
Things are moving fast here.
Well, I'll keep it very brief. I just wanted to clarify the process of making changes that I think Mr. Bakari did very well. That's the conversation I had with Alicia and Allison. Is that correct? The process that Mr. Bakari just put it out there for us, where if it's a technical change, it's not going to take two years or four years. And I know that's a concern. One of the constituents had written to me, and I had forwarded that email to you, and you had explained that, you know, if it's a technical change, it's going to take.
It will be quick.
Few days, few weeks, to maybe even as, as soon as a few weeks. So I just want to make sure that we put that message out there. Two to four years is for community plan, that some area residents want to sort of take deeper dive into what the neighborhood will look like 10 years down the road.
That's correct. And the area plans will, for each area, will not individually take two years, it's a matter of getting through the entire city. So just clarifying that. But yes, you can get through an inconsistent technical change quickly.
Now, just Graham, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sorry.
No worries at all. First, let me thank staff, right? I know this has been extremely cumbersome over the last two years, right, to get us to this point today, and I'm speaking to the, towards the substitute motion. And we had this conversation on the phone last week. I told you we would be here, right? And so I'm spot on again. But I'm, and I'm agreeing with my colleague to the left, because I'm.
Is that an endorsement?
No. This is agreement on this point.
You don't want that endorsement.
I want that endorsement.
Taiwo just texted me and said, I got it right. Look at that, everybody. I'm sure.
I don't know about that.
And to, to Councilmember Ashmira as well, right, so I'll go to my right. We will never get this thing perfect, right? If so, if that's what we're waiting for, I mean, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, 120 days. And I did have the conversation with members of the Community Building Coalition, and Ricky Hall, and individuals in my district, and I looked at my own numbers in terms of participation or, in some cases, lack of participation. And I came to the same conclusion that, one, I believe that we need to keep the train moving; two, that we ought not and should not, and we will not leave anybody behind, right? The technical corrections are just that, they're technical in nature, and so we can catch up with those relatively quickly. I'm stealing all this language. Change and buy-in, right? Small groups banding together, saying I want to be up or down, I want to be in a different classification. There's a process for that, that you're going to define and lay out. And then lastly, the bigger community plan. And so I know it's complicated. One of the things that I asked staff to do with me, as well as the community, is talk to me like a third grader, right? So I can make sure I understand what we're doing, and by extension, the community understands what we're doing. And anytime you're trying to fix something that you hadn't touched in 45 years, you're going to have some bumps along the road, right? And so I think, and the motion doesn't even say when we stop, right? So, which makes me really uncomfortable, because I believe that at some point, this thing has to come to an end. And so I will be supporting, I will be, no.
Original motion.
Well, the original motion, and voting no against the substitute motion, I just believe that we just need to move.
So I'm going to call the question.
Yes, please.
Mr. Graham, I'm going to call the question on the substitute motion. So in, the substitute motion is stated, is to defer the, the recommended draft of the Charlotte Future 2020 Policy Map.
2020. 2040.
2040. Did I say 2020? Maybe I'm just trying to go back in time.
We're going to delay it until 2020.
Oh, please, not 2020, not 2020.
All right, so Mr. Driggs?
No.
Mr. Eggleston?
No.
Mr. Graham?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Watlington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No.
Ms. Ashmira?
No.
Mr. Phipps?
No.
Mr. Winston?
No.
Mr. Bakari?
No.
All right, the substitute motion fails, we'll go back to the original motion. And now, Mr. Driggs? The original motion is to adopt the final recommended draft of the Charlotte Future 2040 Policy Map. Mr. Driggs?
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Newton?
No.
Ms. Watlington?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Mr. Bakari?
Amazing work, Allison and team, yes.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item 16, South Park Municipal Service District, and the action is to adopt an ordinance approving the creation of the South Park Municipal Service District. And so do I have a motion for this adoption of this ordinance?
Motion to adopt.
All right, Mr. Eggleston?
Yeah, wake up.
And we have a second?
Second.
All right. I just want to point out, in the process that's required, this would have to come back again, this, this action requires two adoptions, one tonight, and then the next one would be in April, I believe, on April 11, if I may have that correct. All right, so any discussion on the motion?
I'd just make a comment, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bakari.
I first just want to thank everyone who's been working so hard. Chris Thomas in the room with us here, Hillary, head of SPAN, the entire SPAN organization with Chris, the entire business coalition. You guys have worked for a long period of time on a well-thought-out plan, and particularly over the last several weeks, if not months now, again, we took a scalpel approach, trying to draw this map around the business corridor, and there were a couple neighbors, neighborhood areas, residential areas, that were drawn in there. We've had in-depth conversations with them. They make up less than 3% of the total impact, but that doesn't mean that we didn't take their feedback and thoughts for granted, and some of them have very unique circumstances. So we've gone way, way beyond what we thought of normal engagement in spending time with all of them. I know many of them are tuning in. For all of you who've spent time having conversations, rallying your neighborhood groups together so that they were aware and had a chance to weigh in, we thank you greatly for that. And I feel very confident that by the time we get to April, if not already, almost at this point, we pretty much understand those last few percentage points of making sure everyone feels like this is a win. So the work is not yet done, but there's a light at the end of the tunnel here, and I just am very grateful for everyone's engagement.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment before?
Yes.
We have Mr. Phipps and then Ms. Ashmira.
Ms. Ashmira?
Mr. Phipps and then Ms. Ashmira.
Okay.
In reading the description in our packet, I was wondering where in the finding of need report is the process for increasing the millage rate described? I didn't see it in there anywhere. I don't know who could answer.
Four cents for $100 in valuation.
I know, I know what it is. What I'm talking about, the process to increase it at some point.
In the past, Mr. Phipps, the council has, for the other districts, they have had recommendations that came to the council in the budget process if they changed the millage rate or the tax rate for the district. And in general, the council has said that it has to have support from the district residents and businesses. So that's been the informal way that I recall, but I don't know if there's an actual formal answer that is in the statute for the municipal service districts?
There's a formal We did it for Center City Partners, and there was a definite process. And they came to us, and they said, this is what we have done to satisfy ourselves about the wishes. And it was subject to a council approval. So there can't be any imposition of an additional tax that is not subject to. We have to be satisfied that they did the things that they should do, and then we vote on it. That's how that works.
And there will be the additional requirement of it being done over my dead body, so.
But I do think we did establish parameters by which that was done. I thought it was a formal process that we adopted.
I'll look into it. I don't have that answer.
I think there is a process that has been used, but I didn't know if it was adopted, though.
I think we did.
Thank you.
Do you want us to do some research on that, Mr. Phipps?
I mean, I know it's one, I know it's one that, because we did it in the last, one of the budget cycles, we did formalize a millage rate increase process. So it's just a matter of
Mr. Phipps, that was from the process by which we added not anything to state statute, which lays it out very clearly. It was merely so that we knew for a fact that Center City Partners in that instance went out and got buy-in from everyone. And I can tell you, with this process, we mirrored that in that we have all the letters of support that are there. And my assumption would be, if that had to happen, we would need to follow the same process.
Right, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, good point.
Ms. Ashmira.
Thank you. Ms. Ashmira?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple of questions I have. So Tracy and her team had sent me this mapping that I had requested on how many residential units will be impacted. So we have the map here, and I'm looking at hundreds of emails and letters that we had received, raising concerns around this additional tax and the burden it will create for many, many families. I'll just read out a few comments here. This is from Mike, who is at Morrocraft Village Ownership. He's part of that community. And he says, "An increase in taxes, not only for the initial development of this debatable improvement, but in perpetuity for the repair and maintenance, is neither a productive nor justifiable investment we can support." Other email from a teacher who said, "This will create undue hardship, and I would not like to be part of this MSD." Also, there are other emails that we have received talking about how an individual who is retired and who lives on a fixed income, an additional tax will cause undue stress and financial burden to them. So I can go on and on about this email request that we had received. And I think we need to consider this additional tax and the financial burden it's going to create on many, many of our working families. So I would like to see this map and see how many units that this is going to impact. I'm just talking about the residential impact. So is anyone here from staff who can answer how many units, residential units, we are looking at?
I don't, I didn't see.
Yeah, we have someone approaching the podium.
Mayor Christina Thicke is coming in.
Hi, Christina Thicke with Economic Development. Councilmember Ashmira, I'll have to get back to you on the direct number, but again, it's, you know, less than 3%. I will tell you, I was very familiar with the residents who wrote in as well, and most everybody was from Piedmont Row, which we have agreed to exempt from the MSD.
So I understand that we did make an exclusion because of the number of emails we had received from that community. But there were other emails that we had received from other communities, right? So how can we make this map where we can reduce, not even reduce, but eliminate the impact it will have on our residential community? This is a four cent tax per $100 of property valuation. So what are we looking at, $400, $500 per year? What is the impact?
I would say 100 to 200.
100 to $200. That depends on
75 in most cases.
So that depends on the property, well, assessed value, right?
Yes.
So I would like to see the financial impact it will have on residents, how many units we are looking at, number of units, residential units, that this is going to impact. And could you also talk about how these funds will be used? Because we got some emails that talks about infrastructure, but from what I understand, the infrastructure is cities' responsibility. Our CIP dollars are used for infrastructure. None of these funds, MSD dollars, can be used for infrastructure. Am I correct?
I believe they can be.
They can be used for infrastructure, like sidewalks, road widening. Is that correct? I was under the impression it could not be used for any infrastructure projects. Mr. Jones, could you address that?
Yeah, so I'm not sure, Christina. Is it?
No.
I'll have to clarify that.
No.
I misspoke.
It's not intended to be used for infrastructure projects. This is for the purposes of promoting the business community and commerce. So the typical outlays for this are marketing-type of exercises, planning, research
Public-private partnership.
Public-private partnerships.
So that's the impression I was under. So I think we need to put a clear messaging out there.
We have.
Yeah, so this is not for infrastructure, because I think some
Correct. We've already done that.
Yeah, because some of the emails we are getting, it's talking about infrastructure.
We're getting the emails, and we've addressed that.
Okay, but that's probably, you had directly addressed it. But what I'm talking about, that there needs to be a direct communication to all the residents who reach that just.
We've done that.
So, okay, so that communication is done.
Yes, that's happened, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we are
I have a question.
We are looking at the impacts in terms of number of units
Yes.
And what is the average tax impact it will have?
Yes.
And one more item I have. And also, could we have a pro forma of how these funds will be used?
Yes, we've already done that.
How much would it, do we have the pro forma?
Yes.
That's in the Finding of Need.
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to see that pro forma and how this
It's up to go in your materials, and you can see that.
Okay, all right.
Call the question.
Well, I look forward to having this report.
It's in your materials.
Mr. Bukhari.
Mr. Bukhari, Ms. Ashmira has the floor, and she's asking
Yeah, I know.
Clarifying for the staff what she'd like to add.
Yeah, Mr. Bukhari, when you speak, you have my attention, and I expect you to do the same with me. Thank you. So I would like to see a follow-up report on these items. And I would like us to address the concerns that's been raised by next week. Thank you.
Okay. Good job.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and we'll have any, are there any other speakers from the council?
Nope.
Hearing no other speakers from the council, we'll start the roll call vote. This is for the adoption of the ordinance approving the creation of the South Park Municipal Services District. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
She walked out of the room.
Okay.
She asked.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
She walked out. She's coming, wait, she's coming.
Mayor Protem is, I think, out of the room as well.
She's back.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bukhari.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, the next item is Item 17, Adopting an Initial Findings Resolution, Set a Public Hearing on Airport 2022 General Airport Revenue Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. So do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Hearing no discussion. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
She's out of the room.
Is she still out of the room?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bukhari.
Yes.
The next item is Item 18, Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center Governor's Office Lease, A Topped Resolution Authorizing a Lease Agreement with the State of North Carolina for the lease of approximately 1,300 square feet of office space. And the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center authorized the manager or his designated to negotiate and execute all documents.
Motion to adopt and authorize.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Bukhari, please.
Hearing, was there someone that wanted to speak?
Tark.
Bukhari?
Mr. Bukhari.
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't know if there's someone who can address it, but I'm just, I glanced at this quickly, and then this essentially equates to $14 a square foot for office space in the government center uptown for the governor's office. And while there's benefit to having them on-site, I remember us kind of going through a similar exercise with a small business in the government center where we had some challenges with this. And I just say, $14 a square foot is probably half the going rate for what that would be done uptown. Was there a reason why we chose that dollar amount?
Did anybody question it when it was Governor McCrory? Oh, that was different.
Exactly.
That is true. Have we always done it a certain rate, or is the formula the same?
Phil Rigard, General Services Director. So this rate is derived from what we negotiated back in 2000?
2020.
2000, October 6. Right, so it
Started originally in 2000.
2013 was when we originally leased this space to the governor's office. A rate was negotiated at that point in time. And basically, what's happened is this rate has escalated 3% a year since. So that's how the $1,500 has come.
I don't want to sidetrack us right now, but I would like us to come up with a strategy where we look at market rate, you know, capabilities here. At some point, we're eating the cost for this, whether it's the opportunity loss or, you know, the overhead we're actually covering for it, for what we have to pay on our debt. So I would just say, we can move forward right now, but $14 a square foot for uptown office space is pretty light.
Duly noted.
It's contractual, though, right? In other words, this number is locked in by a contract that has some sort of renewal provision in it. So we don't have any scope for trying to renegotiate the number at this point.
This is, this is a, this is not a renewal. This is a new contract. It's a one-year contract with two one-year options to renew. So we look at this annually.
That doesn't answer the question.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the item. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bukhari.
No, I'm, yes, I'll say yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the exchange of land rights along the Lynch Light Rail Corridor with the South End Owner LP. Adopt a resolution authorizing the exchange of the land, authorize the manager to execute all necessary documents. Adopt the budget ordinance appropriating 473,000 from the South End Owner LP for full fair consideration of CATS-owned property in the CATS Capital Investment Plan.
Motion to approve, authorize, and adopt.
We have a motion to adopt and authorize. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bukhari.
Yes.
All right, the next item is municipal agreement for relocation of water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a municipal agreement with North Carolina DOT for construction of water and sewer line, relocations, adjustments, improvements, and authorize the manager to approve the reimbursement request for the actual cost of that utility construction.
Motion to adopt and authorize.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bukhari.
Yes.
All right, the next item is adopt a resolution to suspend sister city ties with Varanish, Russia. Adopt a resolution to do so. Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Eggleston and Phipps.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Mr. Driggs.
Yes.
Mr. Eggleston.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Newton.
Yes.
Ms. Watlington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Ms. Ashmira.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Bakari.
Yes.
Tonight, the city council will consider, I'm sorry, yes?
I wanted to just make one comment I should have gotten in for discussion. I wanted to acknowledge that we have some of our Ukrainian friends here tonight in the audience. They've waited patiently all night for this item, I assume, either that or it's nominations. Thank you for being here, and I wanted to also say that a lot of people in the community have asked how they can help the Ukrainian community, and I would, I would direct you to go to either their website, which is Ukrainians in Charlotte, or their Facebook page, Ukrainians in Charlotte. And I think the website is ukrainiansincharlotte.org. Right, so, please. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Well, we can't allow you to speak tonight, I'm sorry, but.
The love we felt for the last four months, four weeks is amazing. So, we just, everyone in Charlotte came together as a single family and really supported us, and, you know, they feel our pain, so we thank you.
Thank you, and I encourage everybody to look at the website. There's ways that you can help immediately, so we'll do this together. Thank you.
Give them hell.
Thank you. All right, tonight, the city council will consider nominations of various boards and commissions. The council members submitted the nominations to the clerk earlier, and the nominee will be read at the, will not be read. Tomorrow, the clerk will send everyone a notice of the municipal applicants that received the two nominations, and then we will go proceed to follow the regular process for this. Any questions on nominations?
We're going to get the clerk through the ones with six tonight.
Do we have the, Madam Clerk, do we have people that have had, received six votes for any one of the committees or boards or commissions?
Yes, ma'am, there are numerous.
If we could do those, we can do it in a single motion?
Yes, ma'am.
If you will tell us those unless someone on the council objects.
So, for the Business Advisory Committee, Ashok Mora, the incumbent, received nine nominations. There were three appointments, so the other two will come back to you at your April, the second meeting in April. For the Charlotte Business Inclusion Advisory Committee, Gary Beal received 10 nominations. For the Charlotte Tree Advisory Committee, Olivia Scott received six nominations. For Keep Charlotte Beautiful Committee, there were two appointments that received 10 and nine nominations, respectively. Christian Behrens and Lisa Marie Kershakun received nine nominations. For the Neighborhood Matching Grants, Stephanie Al Zubedai received 10 nominations, as did Andwale Beatty, Patricia Johnson, Debbie Rubenstein, and Michael Young all received